Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council meeting on Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Public participation in this meeting can be done by viewing it live on Channel 4 or going to LHCaz.gov/tv, or of course, joining us here tonight in the council chambers. We will now have our invocation from Dr. David Bybee from Community Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the Cancer Association of Havasu.
I always counted it an honor to be here, and I think that Mr. Mayor and the council that you're doing a great job. Let's go before the Lord in prayer. Gracious God, and everlasting Father, we assemble this evening to do the best we can for our city, Lake Havasu, and to honor you, oh Lord. Oh Lord, your creation around us is awesome. You created the desert mountains, the beauty, the water that we enjoy, and this great season where our friends move back, our visitors come into our city. What a blessing it is. Oh Lord, give us wisdom to make decisions that enhance the beauty of our wonderful city, and may Havasu be like the Bible passage of Matthew 5:14 states, "You are the light of the world, like a city on a hilltop that cannot be hidden." May the council help with your power to make Lake Havasu City a place of joy, friendship, kindness, happiness, love, and spiritual strength. In the magnificent, mighty, and powerful name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Cancer Association of Havasu.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And good evening and welcome. If you would like to introduce yourselves and talk about all the great work you're doing at the Cancer Association.
I am Jolene Jensen, the Director of the Cancer Association of Havasu. These are two of my volunteers on our committee, Margie Snyder and Kathy Jo Ballmer. And I just want to let you know, the Cancer Association of Havasu is a program under the Havasu Community Health Foundation, a 501(c)(3) charity. The Cancer Association focuses on low-cost cancer screenings for our community. We rely always on donations and volunteers. So far in 2021, the Cancer Association of Havasu has paid over $65,700 for mammograms right here in Havasu. That's 347 life-saving screenings right here. As you know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We're going to raise money to pay for those low-cost mammograms here in Havasu. All the funds that we raise stay local and help our community. This is the 23rd Annual Walk. It'll be this Saturday, Saturday, October 2nd. We're going to meet at the stage under the London Bridge at 7:30 AM for the kickoff. And we want to let you know, we believe wholeheartedly that early detection is saving lives. Mammograms save lives. We walk not only for breast cancer awareness this month, but also to honor all breast cancer survivors in our community. Please join us. You can register online at havasucommunityhealth.org, or you can come down Saturday morning. We'll have registrations right there. It's $20. Please come join us and help us raise these funds. Don't forget, mark your calendar. Our next big fundraiser is Wednesday, November 17th, our 34th Annual Fashion Show for our community. We're going to have a great time. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch.
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments need to be three minutes or less. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your three minutes is up. Anything that is brought up at Call to the Public is not on the agenda, so we won't be able to have a two-way conversation, but we'll be able to listen intently to your comments and possibly give any feedback to staff if necessary. If you're here for one of our public hearings, we encourage you to wait and talk at that time, because then we can have a two-way conversation back and forth. You do not have to sign up to do calls to the public, but we did have a couple of folks do that. So we'll go in that order first, and then if anyone would like to address the council after that, please feel free to do so. So the first speaker will be Judy Davis. Yeah, good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for my comments. I am President of our HOA, and I'm addressing the city council on the assessment that, you know, has been assessed to all condos for the water and sewage. Most of the people in our condo are retired, not retired people, but elderly people, and they live on fixed incomes, and our buildings are old. So I know that's not your all problem, but it is our problem. But we have assessments that we have to pay, you know, to keep our building up. And then when the assessment for the city council assessed the condos for the water and sewage increase, it put a burden on these people that live in our condo, and I just wanted to address the city council on that. So if they could do anything for us, and the mayor came up to me because he heard my comments, and he said that there is going to be, you know, discussion on that matter. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Davis.
And thank you for listening to me.
Yeah, thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Christine Simmons.
Thank you, and thank you, Judy. She's one that's been spreading the Kindness Matters cards, so. I want you to look at the Living magazine this month. And guess who's in it? But a friend of mine said, "I recognized your horse before I recognized you." So I don't know if that was a compliment or not, but she did say the horse is bigger than me, so I'll guess I'll take that as a yes. But anyway, if you want any information on me, I'm in there, but this is outstanding, this magazine. This is full of women that are in business here in Havasu. I believe in, you know, supporting local business, and there are so many talented women in Havasu. So check it out. Look at my page. My daughter wrote the article, so you're going to get the true story about me. In fact, we met David the other day, and she was already apologizing for my kindness cards, because she's witnessed I've passed out about 2,000. She's kind of up to here with that, but anyway. Okay. You know, I'm part of the Kindness Matters movement, and I went to the school council, the school board meeting the other day, and I shared with them the Kindness Matters cards like I did with city council. And guess what? Two board members came up to me afterwards saying, "How can we get these in our school? Because they're our children cards, and they're just outstanding." I mean, I taught kindergarten for 38 years. Yes, I'm old enough to have done that, and plus I've been Havasu resident here since 2008 after I retired. But my very first kindergarten class is turning 50 this year, just like the bridge. Is that kind of scary? Oh my God. I would love to hear what they're doing now, but I hope they're good patriotic citizens, because I taught my kindergartners, "When you go to a game and they sing the national anthem, you take your hat off and put it over your heart." And I can't tell you how many parents reported back to me that they were telling every adult around them that they need to take off their hat and put it over their heart. So when you go to a special event, remember that, gentlemen. Take your cap off. And please, if you get a chance to go on YouTube and look at Woke Kindergarten, yes, Woke Kindergarten. I know woke is out there in lots of different areas, but when they touch my kindergarten domain, I'm fighting mad. So look at Woke Kindergarten. They're teaching gender to five-year-olds. And David, you're our flag man, and I have 13 flags for you to remember, the 13 that were killed in Afghanistan. And I think it'd be nice to have them somewhere in a city area for everyone to remember. And I have my Biden, "Bring our Americans home," and our interpreters, "Shame on you for leaving them." And to our governor, "Bring out our National Guard and protect our border." And to all of you.
Oh, Ms. Simmons, you're going to have to wrap it up, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. And to all of you, I gave you a flag for your car, because if you see an old 1985 car driving with a flag, that's me. Of course, I call it a classic. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. We don't have any other speakers that are signed up, but if anyone else would like to address the city council, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Don Wisdom. My issue is about the, one of the issues is about the water in the sewer. And I don't know how grandfather clause enters into this, because the condom I'm in is 40 years old, and I don't think you can just change how you're going to bill me for my water and sewer individually, other than as the condo complex. So there's an issue there. The other item I have, I talked to the mayor earlier today about the courtrooms, and he assured me that the next demonstration, excuse me, presentation that those architects are going to give will be a lot more clear. So we really know that we're going to have two courtrooms, not one. We're going to have bathrooms for the judges. We're going to have special judges' rooms. What they showed the other day looked like something I saw in a kindergarten class. My story.
Thank you. Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, council. My name's Don Troutman, and I'd like to begin with asking our almighty God to guide this panel in wise and just decisions. I too would like to bring up the subject of the increase in the water and sewage, a 100% increase. Individually, it breaks down to $50 per unit. That's a direct attack on capitalism, a direct attack on landlords in particular. It's an attack on affordable housing for the workforce. It's an attack on my tenants who are elderly and on social security. They don't have a 100% increase per year, they get 2%. 100% increase, in my opinion, is criminal and immoral. Is this the future of Havasu? I have elderly and disabled tenants on social security. $50 increase may stop them from getting necessary medication, food that they need. This has to be recalculated. I was at the last city council meeting. I've heard no progress on having this recalculated. Is the only path for the public to litigate this under the Fair Housing Act, the Federal Fair Housing Act? I'd like to hear some public notice about what progress is being made on this. It's hurting a lot of people. It's hurting the little guy who's going to have to absorb that $50 increase. And I thank the panel for their time.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so on October 26th, we'll have a council item that will be discussing this. So the consultant will come back on October 26th, our second meeting in October, to have a public discussion. So please mark your calendars and be a part of that discussion, so we can work through that. So thank you, Mr. Troutman. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ed Jacobs, and I'm owner and broker of Arizona Coast Properties here in Lake Havasu. And part of my business is that of managing homeowners' associations. I manage 15 homeowners' associations at this point, which totals a little over 500 units that have been affected by this increase. I have some examples to present to the council on what this has done to the HOAs in the community. I have the latest billings. Southwest Retreat, the bill went from $2,800 to $7,073. I have another billing from Xanadu Lake. The billing went from $1,900 to $5,485. I have another billing. This is from Xanadu North. Their billing went from $1,200 to $4,678. I have Village Park. Their billing was $744. It's now $2,351. Let's look at Bahamas Shores. $810 was their old billing. Now it's $1,617. Glen Eagles, $2,700. The new rate is $3,800. This is a sampling of the accounts that I manage. Each one of the accounts, all 15 of them went up, all of them dramatically, and it's a real dilemma for the homeowners, especially right now, because they really can't absorb these kind of increases, because their CCNRs require them to just have an annual meeting where they set their budgets. Well, this came through mid-year, so they cannot adjust their budgets, even if they could afford it. So I was pleased to hear a little earlier tonight that there is a work session scheduled for October 26th, and I appreciate the city council taking another look at this, because these are dramatic increases that are affecting a lot of people. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Excuse me, may I have the copies of those? Do you mind?
Can I just?
Email them to me?
Email them to you?
Yeah. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Oh, I'm sorry, you only get to, Mr. Wisdom, no, you're not on spare time, you only get one opportunity.
But I didn't use my three minutes.
Yeah, but you only get one opportunity, so we'll be here afterwards.
A simple question. Are they going to be billing the condo owners separately, or are they going to be billing the condos like they have been billing them?
Yeah, Mr. Wisdom, it's not on the agenda, so we can't have a two-way conversation, but we'll be able to answer questions afterwards. So would anyone else like to address the council at Call to the Public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Moving on to item six is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items on the consent agenda for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Koch.
Motion.
Please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is the Fiscal Year 2020-21 Fourth Quarter Contracted Agents Reports. Chief Doyle has presented this for our reference. Are there any questions on the reports as presented? All right, they are filed. Item 7.2 is the Investment Report as of June 30th, 2021. Ms. Olson has provided this for our reference in our packet. Are there any questions on the investment report? All right, seeing none, those are filed as well. Item 7.3 is Announce Vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is the listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member, three alternate members, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Applications are accepted at the City Hall and also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov.
Thank you. Item 7.4 is our City Manager Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. In honor of Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, Councilmember David Lane and members from the Lake Havasu City Police Department participated in the recent Havasu Community Health Foundation #YouMatter Suicide Awareness and Prevention Walk that was at Rotary Community Park. Lake Havasu City is uniquely privileged to have organizations like #YouMatter partner with local organizations such as Havasu Community Health Foundation to bring suicide awareness and prevention to the forefront of our community in the way that they did. So fun to see, and thanks for all that participated there. And thank you to Riverseed Magazine for the use of their photos. Mayor, you proclaimed the week of September 19th through September 25th as Surgical Technologists' Week, and Councilmember David Lane, you read and presented the proclamation to Mojave County College's Surgical Technologists Class just last Monday. Surgical technologists are entrusted with the lives and well-being of patients and provide a critical service during surgical procedures. What a great way to honor and thank them for their willingness to take on this very needed career path. Certified surgical technologists graduate from an accredited program and receive certification conferred by the National Board of Surgical Technology and Surgical Assisting based upon passage of the national examination. And these classes are one of many that are offered at MCC here in Lake Havasu City. On September 24th, at the Nautilus Elementary School, they hosted a Sandra Day O'Connor Civic Celebration Day to help students understand and honor the great work of civic leaders, learn about the importance of their own participation in a community, and emphasize civic responsibility. Students spend most of their day learning about civics from various speakers, including our very own councilmembers Cameron Moses and David Lane, as well as our city attorney Kelly Gary, our fire chief Peter Palafas, and our police captain Troy Sterling, were there to have conversations with our youngsters. And thank you to the Nautilus Elementary School for hosting this event and providing the pictures. This past Sunday, Mayor Sheehy, you joined other speakers to honor our Gold Star Mothers at Wheeler's Park. It was recognized, as you recognize, September 26th as Gold Star Mothers' Day in Lake Havasu City. Although they suffered unimaginable loss and pain, Gold Star Mothers of Lake Havasu City unselfishly foster patriotism by dedicating their time to helping local members of the armed forces and veterans, and bringing comfort and hope to families whose loved ones also laid down their lives in defense of our freedoms. Also in attendance at the event was Congressman Paul Gosar. That spoke at the event was Congressman Paul Gosar and State Senator Sonny Borelli. Just last Wednesday, our police chief, Chief Doyle, swore in six new police officers. Lake Havasu City welcomes Officers Joshua Condra, Brian Ramirez, Chad Grabiel, Samuel Anuda, John Pfeifer, and Joshua Benellos. Welcome to the team. Be safe out there. Also last week, our police department, led by Chief Doyle, held an award ceremony for members of the police department. Some of the pictures were captured of the event. Many and many awards were deservedly given. We had special acknowledgements for Officer Nathan Hovedahl, our Public Safety Dispatcher, Rebecca Doofy, Public Safety Dispatcher Sarah Bean, and Public Safety Dispatcher Jennifer Ridgeway. We recognize some of our units, including our Criminal Investigations Unit for their hard work and efforts, as well as our Special Investigation Unit for all the hard work and effort that they put forward. We brought, Chief Doyle provided awards for lifesaving measures. So our lifesaving awards went to Officer Derek Johnson, Officer Kyle Melendez, Officer Brian Ramirez, Officer Angus McGabe, and Officer Andrew Vega. The Police Cross Award was awarded to Officer Brent Skanky, and this year's Medal of Valor Award went to Officer Andrew Vega. Very well deserved. Mayor Sheehy, you proclaimed October 3rd through October 9th as Fire Prevention Week. The 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, effectively serves to remind us in important, that it's important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Mayor and councilmembers attended several events the last couple of weeks, including a groundbreaking for Paradigm Storage. There was a ribbon cutting for Victory Lane Quick Oil. We have the ALCS Law and Order Night just last Saturday. We had a speak-out today with the Havasu Youth Advisory Council. And today, Mayor met with the World War II veterans, taking to the sky with Dream Flights on a 1944 Sturman biplane. And the Cancer Association of Havasu for a proclamation presenting, announcing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Lake Havasu City. So much going on. Some might have seen some testing we did over the weekend. I want to provide a huge thank you for all the hard work that our Lake Havasu City Public Works employees and crews did for replacing, just short of 700 lighting fixtures over the last several weeks, and as well as the new wiring system and replacing the 50-year-old conduit and wiring systems that we had at the bridge. They did a fantastic job, and they finished just in time for our upcoming 50th anniversary celebration. This will result in a 30% to 35% energy savings compared to the conventional LED bulbs and wiring that was previously in place. In keeping with the current lighting scheme and recognizing the importance of London Bridge being both an historical attraction and tourist designation, the new LED fixtures will have the same color temperature as it appeared before throughout the year with a little more clarity, along with the capability for each fixture to change colors from time to time. With this cloud-based software, the lighting can be programmed, provide dynamic lighting scenes remotely through a tablet or smartphone that is controlled by the city for special events and holidays. On, I think it's Friday, right? It's October 1st. You'll see the first variation in some of the colors. As we heard earlier, we'll have, month of October is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Month of October is also for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So you'll see some pink and purple colors on the bridge for the month of October, recognizing those two very important issues. Won't go into great detail, other than it's a great time to work for Lake Havasu City. We have a variety of different openings and positions that, if you're interested, please learn more by visiting our website at LHCaz.gov. We'll have a coffee with the mayor and city manager. It'll be held on Friday, October 1st. That's this Friday. We'll be under the bridge at 8:30 AM, so please attend if you have questions and want to express any concerns or ideas with the city. On October 10th, we'll be at, excuse me, October 10th, 1971. After three years of reconstruction, the bridge was rededicated with the vibrant celebration still remembered by longtime residents. Just about a month away, on Thursday, October 28th, at 4:00 PM, please join us at the stage under the London Bridge as city celebrates the golden anniversary of the dedication of London Bridge. The whole community is invited to attend this fantastic occasion. For more details about this day, and as well, there's many events that are occurring throughout October, please go to Golakehavasu.com. And finally, the latest numbers as provided by the Mojave County Public Health Department regarding COVID shows us that there were 139 new cases since my last report, or since our last council meeting, and you can see the breakdown in the graphic presented. Currently, there are 87 active cases of COVID in Lake Havasu City. As always, be smart, be diligent, and let's support one another. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item 7.5 is a legislative update by Brian Tassinari of Willetta Partners. And Mr. Kozlowski, I believe you're going to introduce that. Before we do that, I do want to recognize a special guest we have with us, Representative Leo Biessucci is with us, and he'll be part of this discussion as well. So thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we will have a brief presentation regarding the most recent legislative session from Brian Tassinari with Willetta Partners. Brian is the city's contracted lobbyist, who assists in monitoring and tracking and supporting bills that benefit the community, as well as helping the city defeat bills that may impact local control, state shared revenue. as well as helping the city defeat bills that may impact local control, state shared revenue, and support unfunded mandates. Not only do we have Brian providing us with the presentation tonight, we'll also have Representative Biassucci talking about his perspective of legislative session, as well as giving us an idea of what to expect in this upcoming session as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brian. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Tassinari. Thank you for joining us.
Mayor, thank you very much. Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. Apologize for not being there in person. I was kept in the city on a meeting with a little Mojave County nexus. Representative Cobb passed a bill five years ago to regulate the procurement of human tissue, five years ago, and we're working on the rule package to get it implemented into law. So the wheels of government turn slowly. The second observation I would make is what a joy it is to be able to speak before Representative Biassucci, because he's always in committee, and then I have to wait my turn, so this is tremendous. I really appreciate that as well. You are lucky. I will observe that I've been representing the city for a long time, and the ability of your three representatives to get things done has waxed and waned over the years. It is definitely at a high point right now. You've got two Members of Leadership and Appropriations Chairman who also work well together. But that's going to change. Everything changes. I guess that thing about the constant, the only constant being change is true. I remember when Representative Biassucci was just the new guy, and now he's in leadership. It was, as I said, a very, a very successful year, and a lot of that credit goes to your legislative team. Representative Biassucci worked very hard on getting appropriation for the worn portions of Highway ninety-five. It ran into some trouble in committee, and he sidestepped that and pushed through it. Forty-six point seven million dollars for a rural freeway is a colossal amount of money, and will go a long way to fixing the parts of that road that need to be fixed and keep it in good shape, which is obviously good for economic development and the safety of the community. The other thing that I worked on with Representative Biassucci that I'm particularly proud of is the change in the SLIF funding. Over the years since the Great Recession, the State Lake Improvement Fund was used, other than its regular purpose, but rather just to finance State Parks Department. A worthy enterprise, no question, but the SLIF fund was designed specifically to support infrastructure, and more specifically, by the way the funding is set up, infrastructure in places like Lake Havasu. Historically, on Lake Havasu, fifty percent of SLIF funds have been spent, which is millions and millions of dollars. So while the appropriation is tremendous for this fiscal year, the other change that was made that will pay dividends in perpetuity is State Parks is no longer going to be funded in taking money from the SLIF fund. So city staff will be able to make application for literally millions of dollars over the coming years. In the past, it's been used to build seawalls, to buy equipment for the sheriff to patrol the lake, and a variety of other really important things related to Lake Havasu. Turning the page to next year, I had some preliminary conversations with mayor and a couple of Members of Council, as well as staff. And right now, our major effort is going to be to try to put some brakes on the vacation rental home problem in Lake Havasu. It is a good first step. It's not a complete solution, but we've seen more aggressive efforts over the last three years by other legislators fail. And so I think this sort of building block approach makes a tremendous amount of sense, and I'm looking forward to getting started on that with Representative Biassucci, Representative Cobb, and Senator Borelli. And that is all I have to say, and Mayor, Council, I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Yeah, Mr. Tassinari, real quick, if you could just get to basically one-on-one about how a bill's passed and how, you know, a lot of times people are like, oh, it's common sense and it should just happen, but if you can kind of just go through the committee process, both chambers of the House and the governor's signature.
You bet.
Thank you.
You bet. And I'll talk about the bill I just mentioned. So it starts with an idea. This idea came from someone at the city. Sometimes it comes from people like me. It can come from the community. It can come from anywhere. And then it needs to get developed into legislative language. That's something I can help with, or people can do it with an attorney. The next step is you got to find a good bill sponsor, like one of our three representatives. You got to think about how, you know, getting the, a majority of the House and Senate, so you got to be careful who you pick as a sponsor. Do they sit on the right committees? Are they, they have good relationships with leadership so they can get it to the floor? Once January comes, the bill gets introduced. We say dropped, which sounds kind of backwards. It sounds like you're done with it, but dropped means started. I think it comes from dropped in the hopper. And then it has to be heard in a committee, at least one committee in the House. Then it has to be heard on the floor for a vote, and then for a final vote, and then it goes over to the Senate, and the whole process starts all over again. It seems cumbersome, but the value of that process is it allows people to jump in and make their voice heard. It's especially important for rural Arizona, because it's difficult, Mayor, for you to just drop everything and come down to this phoenix if something's fast-moving. So it's nice to have a second bite at the apple. But again, in the Senate, it would go through committee. It would go to the Senate floor for a first vote, then a second vote. And if we're lucky enough to get a majority vote in the House and the Senate, it goes to the governor, and he has to sign it, and it becomes law. That's one-on-one.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, sometimes it's much more complicated of a process than sometimes we give credit for, so it's important to go over that. And then real quickly, before I open up to questions from my colleagues on the council, you have roots in Havasu, just for those watching at home, and in our audience, if you could share some of those. We're very fortunate to have someone with your caliber that also has roots in rural Arizona, specifically like Havasu City.
Thank you for the softball question, Mayor. I'm going to knock it out of the park. My family moved to Lake Havasu City in nineteen seventy-nine. We bought our clothes at something called Yellow Front, and there were two grocery stores in town. And my parents, Francesco and Mary Lou, still live on Pallaberty Boulevard, and I was just in town last week for my Aunt Dolores's ninetieth birthday. So I come and go to Lake Havasu very frequently.
Yeah, excellent. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Tassinari? All right. Well, it doesn't look like there are any questions right now, Mr. Tassinari, but we'll bring up Representative Biassucci, and maybe you guys will work in tandem for some conversation. So good evening, Representative Biassucci.
Thank you, Mayor and fellow council members. I appreciate you guys letting me be here today and give you a quick update, and thank you, Brian, for all your, your hard work. You are, Brian, like I said, is a lobbyist, but I don't hate him for that, so. Yeah, I appreciate everything he's done. I kind of want to just give a quick update. You know, I'm here representing Senator Borelli and Representative Cobb as well, which could be a good thing. I think Senator Borelli would be here for about four hours, possibly, be here until midnight, so. He's, now, they've both been great. They've both, we've been a team, like Brian mentioned. It's important that you have three solid people in the legislature, because it really is us against the great state of Maricopa, and it's always a battle. It's always whether it's water rights, whether it's certain bills. It's always us battling against the great state of Maricopa, even though we're all colleagues down there. We work together, but sometimes you have to be able to fight back, and with Gina, Sonny and I, we've been able to do that the three years I've been there, and we've passed some incredible things. So I'm going to go ahead and go through a few things that were passed, a couple that I did personally, which were huge, and then I'll go into what we're looking for next year, next session. So the first bill I think I'm most proud about was HB two-eight-eight-nine. This was the child sex crime bill. So I'm sure a lot of you, a lot of people in the public, knew about the Jeffrey Epstein case, and we kind of saw how that unfolded, and how when he was first charged, he was let go, I think it was under eighteen months for what he did. And so I looked into the language in Arizona, and I saw that we had the same situation, to where if you were a child molester, if you were somebody who produced child pornography, you were able to get out in a few months. You were able to have work release. You were able to get parole. And to me, that just didn't seem right, right? These are our children. These are the, you know, people that we need to protect most. And so we were able to pass the bill that said, now it's straight time for your first offense, so first-time offense can be anywhere from ten to seventy years. You're not getting out early anymore. You're not getting parole. You're not getting work release. Any second offense is life in prison without parole. Huge win for the state of Arizona, the first state to have this kind of law into place, and I'm hopeful other states will follow with that bill. Second bill, which is a huge win, was HB two-one-one-one. This made Arizona a Second Amendment sanctuary state. So this bill is very simple. It just said, if the laws change that affect our Second Amendment, there will not apply in Arizona. We'll not spend law enforcement dollars. We will not, the courts will not take up these cases. We're a huge believer in protecting our Second Amendment. Arizona, we have more guns than people in the state, and there's a reason for that. And we believe in, you know, responsible gun owners, law-abiding gun owners in the state. We want to make sure they're protected, and so we did that. So that bill passed. It's now state law as well. Another huge win, Senator Borelli was really a push on this, was the Veterans Home. We were able to secure twenty-five million dollars in the budget that will allow us to build either a Veterans Home in Lake Havasu or Kingman are the two areas right now that they're looking at. So the federal government will come in with two-thirds of the funding, the fifty million. It's seventy-five million total. But this will be a facility that veterans will have medical care and living situation. We're, I think we're talking about a hundred beds. So a very large facility, more jobs. This is something that the process has started now, so hopefully we'll have some answers here in the next year, but this is, there's nothing here in the Northwest yet. They have Phoenix, Tucson, I believe Yuma, so this was kind of the last area, and so we secured that funding, so that will be a reality here in the next year. Another huge win, like Brian mentioned, was Highway ninety-five. You know, he talked about the bill process, and I'll give you a quick story on how this happened. So when I came forward to committee with this bill, that was forty-six million dollars for Highway ninety-five, which has not been repaved, areas have not been repaved in twenty years, which is incredible to think about. When you have Phoenix, that's, they're always repaving their streets every year, and they have different tax situation, but I went to committee with this bill, and it actually died three to ten. And the reason it got killed was because you had even Republican legislators who are all majority from Maricopa County area, big cities. They said, there's no reason why you need that much money to fix your highways. So I came home that weekend, and I literally was in my suit taking pictures of the highway on the side of the road. So I was that crazy guy in a full suit and taking pictures of the highway. I went back to committee the next week, and I gave it to them. I said, this is the reality of what we're dealing with out here, because none of them come out here. This is always why there's a battle. None of the, really, the Maricopa legislators, they come to the small rural areas, and they have, they have no idea what we're dealing with. After that happened, it passed ten to zero. So we got that funding done. It'll repave any areas from Sarah Park all the way up to the Pilot, as well as Bullhead City, all the way through Bullhead City, Mojave Valley, Fort Mojave area. So a huge win for us in that category, and you know, we, these roads are lifeline. It's right through here. There's no way in or out other than Highway ninety-five, so a huge, huge win. Another enormous win was we were able to make Arizona a flat-tax state. So income taxes will now be two-point-five percent across the board regardless of income, which is something that we had to do, because you have Nevada that has no income tax. You have Texas. You have Florida. You have all these states that people are moving out of the, you know, California. I'll be nice, but they're leaving California, and they're looking for states to move to. And so we knew that we had to be competitive. We know we had to bring in people to come into the state of Arizona. So now we will have a two-point-five percent across-the-board income tax, which puts us right there in line with these other states, and hopefully we can attract the right people to come here. Education, as you all know, I've told you before, I come from a family of educators. Extremely important to me. We put an influx of twelve billion dollars into our educational system, the most ever in the history of Arizona. And obviously, the key is always going to be make sure the dollars are spent properly, and so this is what we hope will be done with this money. And, you know, I think it's a great place to invest. We put seventy million towards our border security and National Guard deployment. Everybody knows the situation happening at the border right now. I was lucky enough to go down there earlier this year, and what I saw was jaw-dropping what's happening down there. And it's not just women and children. We're talking middle, you know, twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year-old men coming in full ammo with drugs and guns and you name it, and they're over, they're overpowered. The undermanned, they don't have the people to fight back. So we knew we had to deploy the National Guard, which we've done. We also knew we had to put money towards border security, which includes cameras, sensors. And so we're, hopefully we can help the sheriffs out, which we're doing now. And today, we actually asked the governor to declare a state of emergency. I got a message from a fellow legislator in Yuma, and they apprehended a thousand last Wednesday on the border coming through, and they just don't have the people to stop it. You know, when I went down there with Sheriff Daniels, they were talking, you know, it went from one a day last year coming across to now we're talking three thousand a month. And they just don't have the manpower. So this is something that's extremely important. I'm hoping the governor will deploy the National Guard fully and declare a state of emergency so we can get some funds down there. Another huge win was we raised the pay for DPS correction officers, prison guards, probation officers, state court employees, a lot of people that have not had a pay raise in a long time. We made sure they were taken care of, and we did that in the budget as well. That lovely thirty-two-dollar fee that everybody saw on their car registration, we finally repealed that completely, which was a huge win. I mean, this was a tax on the people. It was put on there before I got into legislature. That was probably one of my first goals when I got in, was to get that removed. It was not the right thing to do. That did fund DPS, and we knew that. But when we had the money that we had, we said, look, we have the money to make sure they get their pay raises. And so we made sure we took care of DPS, and we made sure we removed that fee. So as of July first, that fee is now gone off of your registration. And finally, twelve million for election integrity. You know, we've, we've had the same type of ballots forever, and this money is going to go towards making sure our elections are secure. Our ballots, these ballots that we're looking at, I'm actually going to Dallas on Tuesday. It's actually the same as currency. So you put it up to a black light, and it has all the technology and security measures as a twenty-dollar bill or a hundred-dollar bill will have. And it's long overdue. I mean, I think we've taken advantage of our election process for so long that we've never checked. And so this is why it's important for us to make sure our elections are secure and fair for this country and the state of Arizona. Beyond that, the SLIF funding as well was huge. Brian mentioned that. That, that's kind of, kind of stuff that fixes Site Six. It's kind of stuff that gives money to the sheriff for patrol the boats. Havasu generates the most revenue from SLIF in anywhere in the state, and so for, over ten years, they've been stealing that money. And so I finally said, enough's enough. This is, this has got to stop. So luckily, we stopped it. We said, no more sweeping the funds, and we pumped up that fund. So I encourage everybody to turn in those requests for projects, so we'll get those hopefully accomplished. And finally, turning to next year, Airbnb's is our number-one issue. We had a meeting today with Jess and as well as the mayor and some other individuals, how we need to figure out how to handle this. People are moving out of this city because they can't afford anywhere to live. And so we need to figure out how do we have a minimal impact. We want to make sure we're not, you know, destroying this Airbnb market. I mean, people rent out their homes and their rooms, and we get it. But we got to figure out a way, a happy medium, so that we can retain employees, and we don't have households that are going for six-hundred thousand, and nobody can rent a place for, if they're, you know, a cook or a workforce, really, the meat and potatoes of this economy. Those are the people who cannot afford to live here. We need to figure out a way to fix that. So we are in talks with that. I appreciate Cal and Jess for the conversations today. Senator Borelli and I will be running a bill together to make sure this happens. It's failed the last, I think, four or five years. Every year, the bill has failed, so we decided it's time for us to step in and do something. And finally, I'll leave with one of my, I think, most difficult bills that I'll be pushing is for either a second bridge or another alternative to the island. You know, we have the resources running out the state to do something, and I tell people when they say, well, we don't need it yet, but the point is, when you have the resources and the funds are there, you need to capitalize on that opportunity. And so this year, we're working right now as well with Cal and Jess on what we want to do and how we can make this work. We're in talks on figuring that out, and this is something that I think is going to be a huge win if, you know, we talk about workforce housing and building new homes. And so for us to develop new areas, wherever they may be, whether it's on the island or whatnot, we need to make sure that we can get there. And also, if there's an emergency situation, we need to make sure that we have a safe route in and out of that island. So a lot of things to talk about, and I brought up, but I appreciate all your guys' support. I appreciate the open channel I have with everybody here on this council. That's, that's huge, and why we've, like I said, we've passed incredible budgets the last few years, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, great, great work that that you and your colleagues, Senator Borelli and Representative Cobb, are doing on our behalf. You know, the items that you did, you really stood strong on the items that were important to our community. You were communicative with us in that approach, and as Mr. Tassinari mentioned, things move so fast. Well, they can go really slow, and then they go really, really fast, and then slow down again, and we appreciate that open line of communication. The Highway ninety-five, not only is it the forty-six million dollars, but The Highway 95, not only is it the $46 million, but generally the way that ADOT does their road projects is there's a five-year plan. So not only did we, we basically skirted a five-year plan, we were able to get that direct funding from the general fund. So we moved up the timeline by, by five years, which is, I mean, it's paramount to, to getting that done for us. So thank you for that. And SLIF, one of the best things that you can see in Lake Havasu is when you're out recreating on the water or the waterfront. I'll look at to the Arizona side, see all the restrooms, campsites, all the great development. Look to the California side and see nothing. That's the difference SLIF monies make. And, and SLIF basically is the money that our gasoline taxes associated with boat or watercraft gasoline, returning it back to those users. So, and Representative Biisucci ran that bill flawlessly and made that happen. So thank you for that. And then the Veterans Home, Senator Borelli's been working on for 10 years and it's a huge win for our veteran community and for our housing needs up in Mojave County. We're very hopeful that we get it here in Lake Havasu City.
A little biased, so.
But we're supportive of anywhere in the, in this area and this region.
Absolutely.
So thank you. And then also thank you Representative Biisucci for standing up on the short-term rental and understanding the, the dire need that we have for local control across the state on this issue. Also engaging Senator Borelli to run a companion bill in the Senate. I really do think that strategy is going to be very helpful for us. And again, thank you for standing up and doing that for us. It's very, it's a one, a number one priority for Lake Havasu City at the legislature because you, we already crossed off the other ones that you've made happen this last year.
You're welcome.
So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments from members of the council? Councilmember Dolan?
Well, we got elected at the same time. I think you've accomplished a little bit more than me. So slow down a second. No, I just want to say I thank you very much. That's a huge list of things and, and the highway is huge, SLIF funds. It's nice to see that government's working the way we want it to work. But it's good that we have a fighter and a warrior and, and on a team that's going after and fighting for us. I know we're always going to be the, you know, the ugly stepchild of Maricopa County to them and we don't need the resources. But I mean, I, I thank you for getting in and then fighting for us. Maybe you can take back to our Republican controlled House and Senate about the whole local control and that we like to have local control and that sometimes if we don't have local control, things get screwed up. Wickenburg and Sedona and Havasu is different than Baus and other areas. And, and we, you know, people complain to me all the time about short-term rentals. And I said, we are flat out, we cannot do anything. The state, you know, we have absolutely, it's literally first line, the state, the city has no control at all whatsoever. So, and I love, I love vacation rentals. I think they're great. I have their place, but I don't like bad neighbors. And when we have, you know, 15, 20 violations and there's nothing we can do, it's hard to tell that to people that, well, call your senator or your representative because we have no control. So if they could bring that control back to us, I think we've had systems in place that work. But like I said, I do appreciate you fighting for us. And I own a gas station. Can I hire a lobbyist to do with the Airbnbs to the city and nobody can control me or regulate me or do anything? And so it's, it's kind of ridiculous to say out loud, but that's literally what has happened. And, and, and I appreciate you taking it head on. So thank you so much.
Yeah. And to address that, Councilmember Dolan, I think the big thing with the, the Airbnbs is like you said, the, the local control, right? I mean, I'll be the first to admit, I mean, it was before I got into office, but they passed the bill that kind of took that away from the, the local cities and towns. And I, I think that was a mistake. I mean, I think that they realize that now. Senator Borelli and I both agree that that needs to change. How that's done is going to be a big question because you, you, you got to realize and, and kind of what was discussed today on, on the process of a bill, you have to have 31 members in the House, 16 in the Senate and a governor agree. And that's very, very difficult to do down there. Cause one person jumps off, the bill is dead. And so it's going to be very, very important for us to figure out what can we get done this year with our body that we have. So we, and, and as well as the governor, he's got to agree to this. And so we need to be smart and strategic about it. And this is why we're trying to bring as many people in as possible to say, okay, what, what do we do to bring some kind of control back to the cities and towns so you guys can figure it out? And we need to just step back and, and let you guys figure it out on your own. Cause like you said, every town is different and they, they need to handle it how they can. So I agree. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the council?
I mean, Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember.
I just echo this, I've known you for a long time, Leo, and I can't think of a, a better guy to be representing Lake Havasu over there in Phoenix. So I appreciate all your work and I just want to echo every, everyone's sentiments up here that vacation rentals and, and strengthening our neighborhoods is probably the number one complaint we hear.
Yep.
And, and I appreciate your, you taking this on head on so that we can get to work and, and start solving it locally. So I was kind of in a meeting with a few people talking, talking about the solutions we might be going forth with. I'm like, well, if this, if the last law that they passed was such a bad idea, why can't we just get rid of it? Why do we have to keep skirting around it? I guess I'm a little more simple minded than, than, than some of these things that happened in Phoenix, but, but, but I, but I know you'll, you'll, you'll do whatever you can to, to push this over the end zone. So I appreciate you and keep it up. Okay?
Appreciate that. And, and you know, to just touch on that, you know, this last bill has been run, I think Brian can correct me, the last three years, four years, they're trying to fix this. And, and I think the main issue is you, when you have, like I said, the great state of Maricopa and they're trying to dictate things, this is a big reason why it dies. I mean, part of this bill last year, I think had noise sensors in the homes they had in this bill that would trigger to the police department if the decibel got to a certain point. I mean, stuff is just crazy. And, and so this is why this bill always dies because there's just crazy things that are put in this thing. So that's why it comes to a point where I'm, I'm somebody who, I mean, when I want to do something, I'm going to do it and I want to make sure it gets through. And so this is why it came to a point where I said, okay, enough's enough. This, you know, year after year, this bill dies, it's, it's time for, to me to step in and Senator Borelli and hopefully we can get something done. So thank you, Karen. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and to, to Brian and Leo both, thank you both. And one of the things that people don't see is, is all the work that goes on behind the scenes. And both of you, as well as Senator Borelli and Regina Cobb, our other legislator, anytime we call you, and it doesn't matter if it's eight o'clock at night or it's eight o'clock in the morning, you always answer our calls. It's really a team. We have a team down there, the, the, the three of you and then our lobbyists all working together. But it's also part of the same team. And I don't think every council throughout Arizona can say that they have the relationship with their legislators that we have. And that's why you see some of these silly things that go on in these bills where we actually sit down and talk about it ahead of time and say, okay, what's realistic? What can we do? And what should we do? What is the right thing to do? And so all of us working together as a team has really, really helped. And you've got more done in the few years that you've been down there than some legislators do in their entire, till they term out, we'll just put it that way. So thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. And I'm looking forward to this next session to, to see what, what we can all get accomplished. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Most of my calls with Representative Biisucci are after 10:00 PM.
Yeah, that's true.
So when it gets out of committee.
Like dang it, he's calling me again.
But any other comments or questions? All right, again, thank you, Representative Biisucci for all of your hard work. And thank you, Mr. Tassanari. We look forward to seeing you in person next time.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item eight of our agenda, the public hearings. Item 8.1 is adopt ordinance number 21-1266 declaring the document entitled amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code Title 11 to add chapter 11.10, construction within public right of way, location and relocation of facilities in public rights of way, September 28th, 2021, a public record and amending the city code by adopting a reference amendments to Title 11 to add chapter 11.10. Ms. Gary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the last city council meeting, this item was introduced. There was a lot of great discussion. This ordinance will put into place the procedures necessary to do work within the city rights of way, also to locate and relocate facilities within the city rights of way. As was discussed, this ordinance outlines all the rights and responsibilities that are associated with that work or that location. We did add in a new section F that just requires that any person performing work within the public right of ways must be licensed in accordance with Arizona revised statutes. Just to make sure that that is clear. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor, questions?
Yeah.
Does that mean approving all the subcontractors below the contractor? I'm sure that the contractor would have to be licensed Arizona contractor, but I'm just hoping they hire all the subs because they come and go so quickly in the asphalt business.
Yes, it's going to apply to anybody who would be applicable underneath the statute.
Thank you much.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments of Ms. Gary? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 21-1266 declaring the document entitled amendments to Lake Havasu City Code Title 11 to add chapter 11 dot 10, construction within public rights of way, location and relocation of facilities in public rights of way, September 28th, 2021, a public record and amending Title 11 to the city code by reference.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 8.2, adopt ordinance number 21-1265, amending city code chapter 9.16, offenses relating to property, to repeal sections 9.16.180, 9.16.190, 9.16.200 and 9.16.210 regarding work in the rights of way and revise and renumber sections 9.16.220 and 9.16.230. Ms. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a companion to the last item. Because the last item was adopted, it's now necessary to adopt this item. This will remove the handful of vague city provisions that are in place for the right of way currently. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Gary? All right, this is a second reading. We had our first reading at our last council meeting. So this is a public, a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for possible discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt ordinance number 21-1265 to amend city code chapter 9.16.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is introduce ordinance number 21-1270, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 9.20, special events, section 9.30.020, noise exceptions and section 8.16.300, special events permit required to update special event standards and requirements. Mr. Kowalski?
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the, to introduce the updates of the current special event ordinance. This process, as we all know, special events are, are very important to the community. In order to streamline the process and make it a lot easier for applicants, we are clarifying the special event application process within the ordinance as well as clarifying reasonings behind if and only if we have to eventually cancel an event if for any reason, if the, the event applicant doesn't put the community back in a way that they received it, if they aren't providing, you know, proper trash plans, which is something that we will be requiring them to do within the updated special event application. Also in the past, the special event application was more of a one size fits all and didn't properly communicate to the special event applicant the steps needed in order to assist staff in helping the applicant put on a safe and proper special event for the community and for the visitors alike. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Could you touch a little bit on the impact from the fire code and is it crowd manager?
Yes, the crowd manager. That is something that all applicants will be well aware of as part of that new handbook that we will be providing promoters and event applicants. That is something that any individual can go on and receive education on becoming a crowd manager. However, depending on the event, we will monitor that with fire, fires assistance and making sure that we have the proper city staff made available to make sure that for outdoor events, whether that be in the downtown or at the parks, that we have the proper staffing in place to make sure that all event goers are, are safe in the, in the event of a situation.
So during the discussion for the fire code, it was my understanding, the, the will of this council was to ensure that the crowd manager component wasn't going to be burdensome.
Right. And that is the case. It, it won't be burdensome. We will work with the applicant to make them aware of, of what to expect. But most event promoters do have ample assistance when it comes to planning their event and enough people on staff that we will help them through that process. And if they do not have the means to do so, we will make sure that we have the proper city staff made available to make sure that they can still continue with their event.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of members of the council?
Mayor, question?
Councilmember Campbell?
And this looks like it's not strict. So obviously it was within the special events prior, the parade, a special event that includes any march or procession consisting of people, animals or vehicles except funeral possessions, excuse me, upon any public street, sidewalk, walk or alley, which does not comply with normal or usual traffic regulations and controls. Can you just emphasize on that? Give me more information on that.
Sure. Any process that's outside the means of a normal procession for a funeral will be required to submit a special event application. So we'll work with, work with them in that submittal, which will be a 60-day process for that event. We'll have them submit that application 60 days prior to their event. They'll then go through the process of meeting with city staff, streets, PD, fire to make sure that there's ample road closures in place for that parade and making sure that it's entirely safe for the community on the date that they would like to have that event.
Is there a minimum number on that? Or if like I wanted to get four of my friends together and we wanted to petition something up and down McCullough, like we'd have to get a special event and let you know 60 days ahead of time?
Well, depending on the size of the event, that is something that we'll take into consideration when that applicant does reach out to the city contacting, contacting us as far as what they would like to see as part of that event. And if it does meet the needs of the special event process, then we'll take it to that next step.
Could there be a minimum standards put on this so that's easier to read and understand?
There could be, but events do vary. So depending on what types of events that we're having throughout the community, you could have events that attract 50 people. You could have an event that attracts a few hundred thousand people. So it's, it's, it's very dependent on being able to work with that individual to make sure that, that the city and staff know exactly what they're trying to plan so we can direct them in the right way.
I guess my other concern is, is I know that we've done like candlelight vigils down at the park with handful of people because of a passing, you know. I just hate to see these things get so invasive and so many steps involved when people want to just gather together as a group.
And, and those, and those will still be fine. What really triggers the special event application process is if they're going to have vendors. If they want a particular space blocked off for just them, then that's something that would trigger the special event application. But if they just want to go down there and use the park just as any everyday citizen, then that's something they can continue to do in moving forward.
Okay, as long as it's clarified for everybody, because I hate to see anybody being bothered with any of that.
And that's something we would work with the applicant on and making sure that they, they understand the process. It's going to be a lot of education as far as updating the special event application. They'll have, that handbook will be very important for them, understanding what all a special event entails.
Okay, thank you much.
Councilmember Campbell, are you talking about D under parade, the heading parade?
Yeah.
Okay, the, the special event includes a march or procession, so that would be the, if an applicant believes it's a parade, they're, they're going to reach out to Anthony and then he'll go through, but a vigil or a walk down a sidewalk, if they're not looking for any services from the city, would be permissible.
That's what I wanted to hear, because, yeah, that's very important to me.
Yes, yeah, specifically for the parade.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments of members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring this back to council. So just in summary, what we're doing is just codifying what the process already is so that it makes, it brings clarity to our special event organizers, makes the process easier and more seamless as it moves through our city departments and gives certainty to our event organizers, which then in turn makes our community so great with all the quality of event, or quality of life events that we have. So any discussion or possible motion?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Koch.
Motion?
Please.
I move to introduce ordinance number two-one dash one-two-seven-zero, amending city code sections nine point three zero point zero-two-zero and eight point one-six point three-zero-zero.
We have a motion from council, or excuse me, from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point four is adopt ordinance number two-one dash one-two-six-eight, amending the zoning classification and district boundary for three sixty, three seventy, and three eighty, Lake Havasu Avenue North, tract twenty-two fifty-two, block two, lots three, four, and five, from mixed-use neighborhood planned development district to multifamily residential district. Mr. Morris.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you. The subject property in this case is located on Lake Havasu Avenue between Sabino Drive and Papago Drive, as shown on the aerial photograph here. It consists of three vacant lots at one and three-quarter acres in size total. The site is currently vacant and undeveloped. The subject property is currently zoned mixed-use neighborhood planned development. That zoning was based, was approved based on a general development plan for a fifty-seven hotel, fifty-seven unit hotel project, which was never developed on the property. The applicant has requested that the planned development designation and this zoning be removed and the property rezoned back to the RM zoning, multiple-family residential. There are, there are two lots to the north that are currently zoned RM. Those two lots were also part of a, this mixed-use planned development project. In two thousand twenty, those lots were rezoned back to the RM underlying zoning district from that mixed-use planned neighborhood. The, the properties also to the west and to the south are currently zoned RM, which is the same zoning as this request. Properties to the east are zoned R-one, single-family residential. As I mentioned earlier, this rezon for planned development was based on a previously approved hotel project that never materialized. In January two thousand eight, the property was rezoned from multiple-family to the, a mixed-use PD based on this site plan. And that site plan rules, if you will, so if anything were developed on this property, it has to substantially meet this site plan or be, or the PD needs to be revised or removed. This project never came to fruition, so the applicant is asking that this rezoning, this current zoning for the planned development be removed and the property zone, go back to the underlying RM zoning district. At this time, the owner has not presented any development plans for the property, but if it is rezoned, it of course will have to meet any, all, all the requirements of the RM district. Of course, any development will be required to go through building permit and the design review process. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of six to one. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions of Mr. Morris from any members of the council? Councilmember Lane.
If I may, Mr. Morris, just out of curiosity, do you know why there was a dissent of the planning and zoning?
That one vote, I, I think it was just because some of the neighbors were a little upset about the, the change in the zoning. I don't think they realized that this, they were, there was some concern about the traffic impact because this was part of a larger project that included lots seven, six, and seven on the end, and those have already been rezoned. So I think there was just a concern about the, the neighborhood there. I don't know specifically, but that's the impression I had.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. So back in two thousand eight, when this item was originally approved with this planned development, the neighborhood was not happy about it at that time. And so this is going back to that original zoning that was there that obviously is complimentary towards all of the, the adjoining properties and should also provide less density and less traffic than what's currently approved on that item. So again, this item comes before us from, with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission in favor of this rezoning, six to one. Is there any additional discussion from council or possible motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Moses.
I was, motion. I move to adopt the ordinance number two-one dash one-two-six-eight, amending the zoning classification and district boundary for the three sixty, three seventy, and three eighty, North Lake Havasu Avenue North, tract twenty-two fifty-two, block two, lots three, four, and five, from mixed-use neighborhood planned development district to multifamily residential district.
You know, let's say we'll need a second and then we can have some additional discussion. So is that, with that motion, is there anyone willing to second it?
I'll second.
All right, so we do have a motion from Councilmember Moses and we have a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? And Councilmember Campbell.
I just want to make a statement again, is these mixed-use developments are very, very important, I believe, to our community and we need to be looking at them further. I understand where we're going with this and why and the location and you got commercial and, but mixed-use is very, very positive on growing cities. Just want to make that statement.
All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is item eight point five, approve a development agreement for the Enclaves at Havasu Foothills, tract two-three-eight-nine, with SSD Clark Development Enclaves LLC regarding the public improvements and gated entry for the development. Mr. Morris.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you. The subject of this prob, of this item is the enclave subdivision up in the Havasu Foothills Estates. It's about a thirty-lot subdivision, it's almost forty acres in size. The city council approved the final plat in July of twenty, earlier this year. It's shown here, the city limits is, is the red dash line, so it's on the boundary of the city. And I'll go to another map here. This is the foothills area map. Phase one is the existing Havasu Foothills. Phase two is where this project is located and phase three is the future development for the foothills. So you see the enclaves down here in the, the bottom right portion of the map. Because the subdivision would be served by private streets, rather than public right-of-way, the developer must enter into a development agreement to address responsibilities associated with the install, installment and maintenance of public utilities and drainage for this development. The development agreement includes the developer's responsibilities to install water infrastructure to city standards in which, upon city inspection, approval and acceptance will be dedicated to the city. In addition, it outlines future repairs, the dedication of utility easements within private streets, drainage, and gated entry requirements. Approval of this development agreement is necessary prior to staff execution and recordation of the final plat. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions of, or comments from members of the council?
Mayor question.
Councilmember Campbell.
As we get farther up here and I, Councilmember Lynn had mentioned last time that she's concerned about fire safety, I am too. And I've had further discussions about possibly the city looking into reducing the fire sprinkler permitting fees, because I noticed they were quite exorbitant, in return for encouraging people to want to put fire sprinklers in these developments in newer homes. I'm not saying mandate, I'm just saying, take a look at some of our fee structure and see what we can do to encourage fire sprinkler systems on these developments.
Yeah, thank you for the comment, Councilmember Campbell. It's my understanding that the entire approval for, for the foothills requires sprinklers, so all of those homes that are being built in the approved area already require sprinklers.
Well, that's awesome, but I still think for the city as a whole, it would be encouraging to get them, more people involved in wanting to put sprinklers in, because the fees sometimes are almost as much as the system itself to go in to your homes is what I was recognizing. As I was digging through our fee structure last time, I was surprised at how high it was. And it could be a really positive addition to encouraging sprinklers in residential throughout our community, which we know it's a safer neighborhood then, for sure.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Knutson or Chief Poloff, if you have any comments.
Yeah, I can address it, Mayor. Yeah, I guess we're a little far, far off topic, so I think that, kind of reading it back a little bit and that's the direction to kind of go there too. I think that in terms of the, the planned development in there is, is the, that they are required to have sprinklers in this area. So any planned development that occurs, including this area, i- is set up for the requirement by, by the city code is for sprinklers, whether it's foothills and Riviera, and I'll stop there before Kelly hits me. So when we have conversations about sprinklers kind of moving forward, I'll say this, is that we're planning on having a conversation at upcoming council meeting and we want to get all the, the feedback and, and provide, that can, get the consensus and where we want to go with, with sprinklers in terms of requirements, fees, all those things. So that conversation is, is forthcoming.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this matter? Yeah, please, Ms. Simmons, just make your way to the microphone.
Hello, I lived in a hill area and I'm just curious what fire department is closest to this development, who would be responding, and maybe they would have some input too. Just a thought.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you for, for those comments. The, there is Fire Support Services there, Chief, I don't know if you would like to address that briefly.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just to address the, the first question on the service fees real quick, is that we, we, I'm sorry, okay. To answer the question is, we do have fire stations that service that area and we are conducting a study that is going to help us allow us to do a comprehensive study, especially in the foot area, area. The closest station is going to be Station Four and actually Three and One. So those are the response areas, when one of those stations are out, those are the stations that are going to cover that area.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah. So some of the comments here about, we just have to stay on topic of the agenda so everyone has the same opportunity to address the council on, on a matter. So any other question, or excuse me, any other citizens that would like to address this at this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Now, is the applicant in the room? Do you have, okay. So the applicant is in the room if you have any questions as well, so we'll bring it back to council for possible motion, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
So we can't talk about, okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I move to approve the development agreement for the Enclaves at Havasu Foothills Estate, tract two-three-eight-nine, with SSD Clark Development Enclaves LLC.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris. All right, moving on to item eight point six is award agreement for professional services for the design of the Downtown Catalyst Project to Dig Studio Inc. Mr. Keen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is the approval of an award for the design services for the Downtown Catalyst Project. In two thousand fifteen, the city unveiled a community revitalization plan known as Vision Two Thousand Twenty. This plan was developed after several town hall meetings, surveys, and meetings with strategic partners and local business owners. A portion of the plan focused on a community gathering and event space known as the Downtown Catalyst Project. This project was identified as one of the major action steps in the Vision Two Thousand Twenty Plan that helped Lake Havasu community win second-place prize of two million dollars in the America's Best Community Competition. In two thousand seventeen, the city purchased a one-point-five-acre plot of land of the downtown area on the corner of McCulloch and Querrio for the location of the Downtown Catalyst Project. Shown here in the lower left-hand corner is the, the property that was purchased. Earlier this year, a request for qualifications was sent out for the design and construction documents for phase one of the project. Phase one of the project will focus on the event and gathering space, while future phases will focus on the commercial aspects of the project. Four qualified design firms responded and the selection committee comprised of several city department heads, the city manager, and representatives from the Partnership for Economic Development reviewed the submissions and conducted interviews. Dig Studios Incorporated was selected as the highest-scoring firm to design phase one of the project. Dig Studio Incorporated will provide the city with design and construction documents, conduct public meetings, assist the city with meetings with stakeholders such as downtown businesses, ASU, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Partnership for Economic Development, and Pillar One Representatives, as well as a cost estimating for construction. The design phase is slated to be completed by September of two thousand twenty-two for a cost of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars, with the funds budgeted in the Capital Improvement Fund and coming from America's Best Community Competition winnings. I would now like to turn the presentation over to Chad with Dig Studios, tell you a little bit more about his firm and similar projects they have designed.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. And Mike, thanks for the introduction. Just really quickly, I think our intent with this project is to have a really robust design process, because there's a lot of possibilities for this space. So even though there, it, it's a small space, I, I bring up the precedent project here in front of you, because this is a, a space that is only about two acres and the space that you actually see in the images here is about one acre, and all of those things you see there happen in that space. And, and what we, what we plan on is, is, is again, going through all the options, looking at how this is also connected to those spaces that Mike showed in that diagram earlier. So there's potential bridging opportunities, restroom facility functions and things like that all need to be incorporated in the design as well. So we really want to make this an attractor. I heard a lot of comments earlier about, you know, what would activate the city and what would bring people and keep people here, and I think that's one of the intents of this project. So that's our intent with the design scope structured the way it is. And I'm here for any questions.
Yeah, great, thank you for the presentation. So just to give a little bit more background on, on how we got to where we're at today is the America's Best Community Competition started by Frontier Communications back in two thousand and fifteen. Over three hundred and fifty rural communities across America applied for this competition or, or entered the competition, I should say. And we were able to make it past the, the initial round, the second round, the third round, we made it all the way to the top ten. And when I say we made it to the top ten, it was, it was really our revitalization plan that Mr. Keen referred to that identified five pillars of change. Pillar one being economic development and job creation, pillar two being education and talent supply, pillar three being tourism and place development, pillar four being water, and pillar five being community engagement. With those five pillars, as Mr. Keen mentioned, one of the stakeholder groups is pillar one who really worked on, championed this area. You can see the entire plan for the Vision Two Thousand Twenty and many of the things that have been implemented across our community that have happened over the last five or six years because of this competition. We made it to the top ten and then we ended up getting a, a second-place grand prize winnings of two million dollars. Of that two million dollars, a million was set aside for this downtown gathering space. As we talked with citizens during this process, the way that those five pillars of change were created was citizens from all walks of life joined us for an entire day at ASU. They represented every Economic Development Association, every social organization, every service, fraternal, club organization, and including citizens at large that came together and just talked about the needs of our community. And amazingly, through the Arizona Town Hall process, they were able to put it down into these, these five pillars of change. And so that's what we were able to identify. This downtown gathering space was initially envisioned as a public-private partnership where we would have some private investments that would be augmented with some public space. And every iteration that was coming forward was a, a public-public-public partnership. So it would be maybe a building built by ASU or another governmental-owned agency, not, not the city, but other governmentally- the city, but other governmentally funded sources, which is not what we talked about. But yet we still have a need in the downtown area for a gathering place that's going to allow our citizens and visitors to have a robust experience that then will start to crawl from that area as the downtown redevelops naturally with private investment. And that was why we won. And so now we're here today to actually see something come to fruition. It's really exciting that it's been leading up to this. The three areas of of development that were focused on the winnings were, of course, this downtown catalyst project we're discussing this evening, the co-work location that the Partnership for Economic Development is is leading, which they have broken ground on the area behind Hawkins Sanchez Hawkins Jewelry Store, McCullough, and then the third is an environmental learning center that is still working with pillar four on what that might look like in the future or what partners might be included in that. But that leads us to here today to have this discussion, be able to award this agreement. And again, the funds that we'll be spending are from the winnings of the competition and the contest, and we're really excited to be able to bring this this forward. Are there any questions of the consultant or Mr. Keen? Yeah, we'll start with Councilmember Lynn and then Councilmember Dolan.
Can you go back a slide? One more. The selection process. On the selection committee, can you tell me when that happened? That specific selection committee, is that more recent or is that back a couple of years ago?
No, the selection committee happened late spring, early summer.
I'm sorry, this, when was that?
Late spring, early summer of this year.
This year?
Yes.
Do you want clarification on who the selection?
Yeah, can you give me a little bit of who was on that?
Yeah, so what occurred on the selection committee is a selection committee was put together of a cross section of stakeholders to be able to go through the request for qualifications with different firms that could provide these services. The one that the selection committee has determined the one to move forward is Dig Studio, which we're here with Chad this evening. Mr. Keen, if you want to talk about who was on the selection committee?
I was, yeah, I was kind of figuring wanting to know who the stakeholders was. And I just have one just little concern and Mr. Keen and I have talked about this because I am on the Parks and Rec Board and this didn't come to the Parks and Rec Board yet. And so for me, that's kind of a concern, especially if that's what we're calling it a park and they're later on going to be part of the stakeholder. I don't believe they were part of the selection committee, so I kind of was just wondering what that looked like with who the stakeholders were.
Oh, so the selection committee was the selection committee for the firm and then the firm will be consulting with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, the downtown ASU PED, there were several others in your report or in your presentation. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Keen.
Pillar one representatives and then just the general community downtown businesses as well will be reaching out to to really kind of formalize what that design should look like.
I guess I just, who are the stakeholders?
Well, we'll have community outreach meetings for stakeholders at large, so all citizens that want to come and be a part of it. Specific subsegments will be the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, pillar one, which was the initial pillar that that was championing this as they were, we were winning the competition. It also will include downtown businesses, the Downtown Association will be part of that, Go Lake Havasu, the Partnership for Economic Development, and anyone else that that wants to step forward. ASU also is one of those stakeholders as well.
I don't want to beat this, but I'm just trying to figure out when he said that this happened this past spring, who was there this past spring? All those people you were talking about are the stakeholders, were they there this spring?
So the selection committee, I think we're a little confused on this. The selection committee was to select Dig Studios. So it was for to negotiate this. So those folks were, Mr. Keen?
Sure, the selection committee was surprised to several city department heads, the city manager and a representative from Partnership for Economic Development.
Two people?
No, there was two people from Partnership for Economic Development. There was the city manager, myself, the city attorney, Public Works Director, the Development Services Director.
Okay.
So it was actually quite extensive individual, number of individuals on that selection.
I'm just trying to figure out how we went from the big Vision 2020 where we said this was a main project to now we're here with the selection committee that it never really went back to the community once we purchased the property. We're going to do that after we decide on whether we hire them today?
So Dig Studios will will put together with those stakeholder conversations to be able to move forward. So it's hard to engage the community without having a partner like Dig Studios to be able to engage the community on on what the best use is of this downtown gathering space is going to be. The the use has not changed at all. It's now how that use is developed and that's what Dig Studios will assist with using those stakeholder groups, including the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dolan?
I have concerns. We don't really have a vision. I've seen plans, we have a great park, it's great balloons are there, we have tons of community events. We put up tents or put up tents vendors, sell beer. It's a great location, we found a great use for it. In the past, I've seen PED, big, huge, millions and millions of dollars, we're going to have this building and then a beer company is going to go in partnership with this beer company and they're going to work together and do this and do that. It blocks the view of everything and it literally just looks out at the power lines on the other side and I I just don't know which and I know we, the whole point of this is to get some direction, but I feel like we're starting off at that point. We have $1 million, so this is 18 and a half percent of our budget because I don't see me approving anything other than that. I I think we have a great location for $1 million. We invest in infrastructure, we put some fencing, some sound system, we have the amazing Pearl Bailey Showmobile for a stage that can be portable. We can, there's so much we could do that, you know, and I'm sure a great company, but it just seems like a lot of money to spend on that when we just don't like, but we won the Vision 2020 contest by using the the resources in the community, all of us getting together, deciding it. We put all that together, we didn't have a consultant then, but now we need a consultant to kind of guide us in a direction that we don't know which way we want to go in. And and I get, I know that's a big concern of who's sitting on the, who's sitting in that, you know, I love the Partnership for Economic Development and what they do, but I don't always agree with how they always do it. And I know they had this big grand idea of what this is going to look like and they picture a big check coming from the government and we wasted a half a million dollars on the Environmental Learning Center and same thing, let them spend the money. This is what the, so I guess I just have got those concerns is that I don't know if we have enough direction for them to even go in. I mean, I have some great ideas and I'm sure other people in the community would, but I'm just going to spend $180,000 and then then what? So that's my concern.
So this process will allow us to have a vision. And so that's what we we need a firm that's going to do this. So what the main change was is that the city is taking the lead. And so we're taking the lead on on the process where there was pillar, pillar one? One of the pillars where pillar one was taking the the lead on the effort before along with the PED. Now the city is taking the lead through our procurement process and that's why we had so many city representatives on the selection committee for this firm. So I it's different from a selection committee on what's going to happen. It's still downtown gathering space. It was the selection for this firm, which our our staff is qualified to do. And of course, we would want our city manager, our procurement and department directors doing that and making that happen. So from here, what will come back to us as council will be whatever is envisioned through this process, through citizen engagement and stakeholder engagement. And if it exceeds the $1 million, we have that discussion at that point. But there will be options for us to be able to use and make that a workable space today using the winnings from our competition.
But why do we need a consultant to gather the community together and find out exactly what? I mean, if we want to use it the way it is, put the sound system in, do that, like this, we want this picture, this is what we all, we've all decided we wanted, and then we come to them and say, this is what we want, how do we get there? I'm just a little concerned, like I said, we did all this without them before and I'm afraid maybe we're hiring them a little too soon in this project. I think we can have public meetings and get the businesses together and what do you want? And present some ideas and then come to them. I don't know, I think it's a little too broad, I guess, is my concern.
Yeah, well, with all due respect, we're not park developers, any of us on the council unless something's changed. So we would need a firm that was going to help us identify what that's going to be. This this contract also includes the construction documents, so we will have something ready to go immediately to be able to go to the next next level. Certainly, we could sit around and have a town hall about how we want a downtown gathering space to look and what it's going to be, but we don't pick trash cans and we don't pick sidewalks and where they go. I mean, that's what this firm that has excellent credentials based on not only what's presented here this evening, but the selection committee's thorough process to get us here, that's what they do. And so if we want this project to get off the ground and be able to move forward, we need to have a firm that's going to assist us in doing that. It's not just meeting with the public.
No, no, I understand. So then can we give them direction in the fact that I'm, yeah, I'm totally fine with this as long as this, you know, we're not, in my opinion, we're not building a park, we're we're enhancing the the setup we already have and that, you know, we did this with the courthouse, we hired a consultant, we hired, did this, we're going to do this for one and a half million, then it's three and a half million and seven million. I want to make sure the consultant knows, anything over $1 million to me is a no vote in the future. But I'd like to see this $1 million go into this piece of property and make it an amazing gathering, but I want to make sure we use the dollars wisely. I am a little nervous if we get off track and we start talking about cohabited this and that and this gathering place and all this other stuff that we have a great gathering place, I would like to see this community money that we won go into that project. And and so maybe are we allowed to give him direction?
Sure. I think he's gathering feedback from this conversation.
If you know it's a million dollars and it's not five or six million and there's other sides saying, well, no, we're going to do this, we're going to do that is, I'm all for this. If it's, if we need to spend 18 and a half percent in design, great, and the other, you know, 825 or 15 goes to building, then I'm on, I'm on board. But if we come back later and it's only this $3 million project, I'm going to think we just wasted that $185,000 because then I'm going to be a no vote because, so I guess that's just my concern.
Sure, no, I think.
I think it's great, I just want to make sure we're all in this, we're all on the same page.
That's fair. I'm not on that same page. I wouldn't pigeonhole anything in our community without seeing what options are of what our citizens are saying. So I mean, the the feedback and what's going to come back is based on what our stakeholders and citizens are going to tell us. And so I'm not going to sit up here right now and pigeonhole myself into a spot that I wouldn't be open to a conversation that's going to make it the best area that that downtown can be based on the feedback that our constituents are giving us. And so I agree, I'm not interested in a $5 million project or a multimillion dollar project. I'm interested in having a downtown project that is a gathering space that we all envisioned that allows us to use the and maximize the proceeds from the winnings to do that. But but I think we need to have a conversation with the community.
Have a consultant, but we are, we have, we have a million dollar budget and if we're talking about bigger budgets, I guess we we have a million dollar budget. So I just want to make sure if we're hiring a consultant to design something for us, but we don't really know what our budget is, do we then need to come back and say what our budget, whether it's 1 million, 2 million, 3 million? Or I just, we're hiring without knowing what our budget is. And in my head, it's a million because it's, we don't have anything else in the CIP budget and all that, so.
Yeah, Mr. Keen?
And to answer Councilmember, Councilmember Dolan's question there, yes, we have talked with a consultant regarding that we, right now, we do have a million dollar budget and that is what they will be planning off off of. There may be some options brought forward that, you know, could enhance it even more that that would come up and then depending on what the stakeholders present as different options. But the, we have discussed with Dig that right now, we're currently looking at a million dollar budget for the project.
Okay. And like I said, I know we have future development and stuff we want to plan on and we definitely have those options, but I just, in other projects we've done, it seems to get bigger and bigger and then we're back and, well, you said a million, wow, it's government. So I just want to make sure we we stick to our budget on this and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Discussion. I am extremely proud of Mr. Keenan and his staff and his budgeting and his report. That's why you guys never hear me arguing with him or saying anything negative. I think our Parks and Rec Department can do this job, just like when we had the positional analysis that we spent so much money on, we depended on our department heads to put their heads together and get it done and they got it done for us. Now we're dealing with the water rate study, that's probably going to come back on our lap as well. We spend a lot of money on consultants that I don't see anything positive happening, has nothing to do with this gentleman and his great company, but we've already discussed that 10% is a fair fee and if we have a million, it should be 100,000. So obviously, they're already telling us this project's going to be 1.85 million. So I have so much faith in our Parks and Rec Department and I would love to give them as much money as possible because I think that they can do this. How much did Cypress cost us?
I want to, I want to say.
If you can remember.
Roughly 3 million?
3 million?
It was about four, yeah, it was about 4 million.
4 million dollars and the design fee is probably about 400,000 then or a million?
I'm not aware of those, that was run through our public sports department.
I mean, a little, I mean, I'm not prepared to answer that question. We can find out that information for you. One, one, if I can, this is a gentleman is a is an architect, is not just a consultant. And I think what we're trying to accomplish here too is that we want to get feedback from the community, we want to get shareholder feedback from the the downtown business owners, pillar one, ASU, PED, the community. So a lot of what what this will be accomplished by Dig is going to be the design, but it's also the the time spent to advertise and attend these meetings, collect that information and try to and try to take this big ball of ideas and identify a a design that can be presented to council. So just keep that in mind in terms of the design costs, it's a little bit more than just the design and it's a little bit more than just being a being a consultant in terms of trying to put these these ideas together. He's got a big, big job ahead of him because we, amongst council, amongst the room, if we ask everybody what their idea and their vision is for for that area, I think we're going to get, you know, 40 different, 40 different answers. So how do we, you know, bridge that that gap and put something forward that the community's going to enjoy?
I'm highly concerned about the price tag again. We've been having a lot of bad runs at it and it makes me very nervous. So that's my statement.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
So I I'm sharing some of the same concerns as my previous, their previous statements. So 1.8, 185,000 and I'm looking at the this fee schedule here, that's kind of the basic. If we want a custom bridge structural design, that's another 23,000. If we want a performance event canopy, there's 10,000. Elevated stage is 17,000. To me, all of those are kind of obvious, yeah, we kind of need that if we're going to have a an event center. And so now we're, we're actually looking at a little bit closer to quarter of a million dollars, so 25% of our, what we have from from the winnings is now just going to go towards planning. And I, and I think I'm, can speak from the the other people who spoke before me, I think we're all just a little gun shy from consultants or architects. My other question is, should we have a builder in here with our architect, you know, the person who's actually going to be putting, putting the shovel in the ground to be a part of this process with us? There's just a lot I don't like about this. I love the project, I want to move forward with it. The catalyst project is something that that's important to me. I just don't know if this is the way to do it because I don't think we're going to get the bang for our buck going this way, unfortunately.
Do you have a suggestion of a way to do it, that we're going to get the bang for our buck?
I've always, I've wondered during a lot of these things, why can't we do some of this in-house? Why can't Mike Keenan and his team put together a nice park? Why can't we learn from what we've already done? Why can't we copy what we've seen? Why can't we do some of this work ourselves? That that's all I'm saying. If we can save a quarter of our project and do it ourselves, that to me is bang for the buck. That's not how we've done anything that goes so far that I've been on council, but I mean, that's how I would do it in my business.
Yeah, so we need to have construction documents at the end of the day, that we'll have that with this. So some of the discussion like with the bridge that you mentioned in the scope of work, it's always been envisioned that we would have other partners come come on board with that. So that might be a local service group or one of those those folks that would put a bridge across Pima Wash to allow to maximize the lot and have the parking lot that we already own at the city.
Right.
So some of those types of things as we have these discussions with with the community and use the expertise of of people that build these, this, we don't have anything like this in like Havasu City already. We don't have a a park that's a gathering space for this multifaceted type of uses. We have ball fields and we have parks and we have beaches and we have pickleball courts and we have softball, we have all of those things, but we don't have this downtown gathering area. The the photo that Chad had showed in this presentation, the four photos, it's the same space with four completely different uses. And as Mr. Knutson mentioned, every single one of us have a completely different vision of what this this downtown gathering space is going to be.
Well, and that's why we have the Parks Advisory Board, but can I actually, can I pose a question to my queen, to my keen, sorry? I mean, could you envision your team putting together a vision going forward and and I mean, could Greg Frostley and, you know, and services put together and manage the project? And I mean, can we do that? Or are we just too taxed for time to where we can't do that and we have to hire outside?
There, there's definitely some concerns there with time and we're not really landscape architects and designers. Yes, we can come up with the ideas and kind of envision what that might look like, have some of those stakeholder meetings, but we're not going to be able to. But we're not going to be able to produce the construction documents for you. We're not going to be able to, um, you know, do the soil sampling. That, that all has, will have to be hired out where DIG will be providing that for us in this agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Councilmember Dolan.
Um, I guess my concern too is we, we, we do have something already. We have something that's working. We have a, you know, great, great park with the grass and, and we found a lot of uses for it. And I'm looking at this picture right now. We kind of have a little bit of all of these already happening there. We have these gatherings. We have concerts. We have, you know, you know, people say, oh, we need a stage. Well, a permanent stage is a lot of work and you're, you're not going to leave the equipment there because you're, it's very expensive. You're going to bring it back and forth and all this stuff. And it's like, well, we already have the Pearl Baby Showmobile. Maybe we work with that for a year or two. And then if we have a bigger need, then we build into it. But I, I would like to see us to put this money to develop what we already have. We know what kind of events are there. We know as soon as there's a beer garden, we throw up tents. Well, or we throw up fences. Well, can we put up some nicer fences, fences with gates? And, um, have some electrical out there, have, um, you know, like I said, we do have the Pearl Bailey Showmobile. There's a section there where they literally back up. There's a power they connect to. They hook up the system, the amps and everything. And it feeds to the back on the other side where they just pop speakers and stuff that's already in the ground. And they plug in the XLR cables and, and, and we're ready to go. And because I think we already have that use. And I guess, like I said, I, I like the idea of DIG Studios and what they're presenting. I'm just, I'm afraid we are one step behind that. I, I'd like to see a community meeting with some of us shareholders. We present some of these ideas. We see what people, because like, we already have it. I mean, this is literally what we already have. And if we can somehow, you know, do it through the Parks and Rec Board and get people for public opinion and get some stuff. And then we come to them with, this is what the community wants. We get the local businesses involved. Yes, this is what we want. We want these pictures. Now help us now that you know, this is what we'd want to do. We're not putting building here and building here and doing all this. We're not building, we're not selling a third of the property to other people in the future. This is our public area. We want to preserve it. We want it to be like Prescott. We want it to be like these other areas where it's a downtown. So I'd like to see that happen. Like I said, I like the idea and I, we, we need somebody like DIG Studios. I just, I'm afraid we're giving them the, we're handing off the ball a little too quickly. I think we need to give them a little bit more direction of what we want. If this is what we want is a match between these four pictures and we've talked to everybody. Then we go to them. We want design. We want the bridge. We want this kind of stuff. Maybe we can get a service group rotary or somebody or Kwanis to put pitch in on the bridge. But once we're at that point, I'm just afraid we're a step too soon.
Yeah. I completely disagree, but, uh, I, I respect your, your opinion. Uh, that is, that is exactly everything that you asked for. Uh, uh, you know, plug in this speaker cable here for the speaker to sound over there. That's what this does. So all of the things that we saw before were much grander and multiple millions of dollars of what was going to happen. And who was going to be on the hook for that? It was either taxpayers or the private development, whatever it was going to be. But no partners were coming to the table. And so to, to, in order to do what it is that, that we're saying is that we, we have the use. We're, we're not looking to reinvent what this use is going to be. But if you go down to that lot, the lot has a pretty large slope. It's not very accessible for anyone on ADA at all. Um, there, it's very difficult to get sound in there. The power's not in a good situation. Um, and, and we need people that are experts in this to be able to, to collaborate with citizens, users and stakeholders to bring all of those pieces together, bring the construction documents forward and we can, we can go forward with that. Uh, that's what this agreement that we have in front of us today does is, is allows us to have the expertise to do that. Working alongside our Parks and Rec Advisory Board. But keep in mind, although I, I respect all the work that our advisory boards do, there are citizens with a general interest in that particular area. They also are not landscape architects. Um, they may have, uh, they, they may be parents that have children in some of our programming. They may be, uh, retired citizens that have a, a long career in, in recreation, but they're not landscape architects. So, uh, that it's bringing all of those pieces together. And it's not like we're just moving the ball forward quickly. This, we've been talking about this for six years, six years, a long time. And, and we've engaged with the, the public throughout that process. This is now to move it forward. And so we will be moving it forward. Again, these are not taxpayer dollars. These are dollars that are, uh, winnings for this exact purpose. And this is what, uh, this is how we won the competition was to be able to move these types of things forward.
Well, I guess my question, and I agree with you with all those things. What are we doing? Are we, what guidance are we giving them? Are we giving them, yes, these four pictures, this is what we want. We have a million dollar budget. Go out and get it. Come back to us. Or, or are we going to veer off course when all of a sudden somebody says, well, we want this co-sharing something, something location. And we're at five million dollars and now we've wasted a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Is it, I just want to make sure we're giving them proper direction. If he can do all these things that we want him to do, I'm on board. But I just want to make sure that we're giving him the right direction and they, he knows what council and what, what we want. So we're getting things going in that direction. If that's where we're going, great. I just want to make sure we're.
Yeah. No, great, great question. And so if you read through the exhibit A, that's, uh, in our packet. Um, it identifies the deliverables in each of the tasks that are there, um, and what exactly they'll be held accountable for. The direction that, uh, they are given is not the direction from the council, other than what our vote would be this evening on this contract. But the selection committee that Mr. Keen outlined earlier already gave them what our expectations are. Again, all outlined and, and very clear tasks, task one, task two, um.
No, I, I agree with you. My, my concern is we are the stewards of the budget and we have a million dollar budget. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. This is, we're, we're, we're asking him to do a million dollar project. And if there's options we can do, this is a million dollar project. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. This is a million dollar project. This is what we want to do.
And I believe that question was answered.
Okay. But I just want to make sure.
Mr. Keen, and that was the direction they gave.
Okay. Perfect.
One, one more question. Can we go out for an RFQ for, uh, an actual landscaping contractor to assist us in this process? To help us with those fees? Cause as we know with the courthouse, we're, we're kind of going backwards, trying to figure that out too. So an RFQ just for a landscape contractor to assist us through the process?
So you want to add another consultant as a landscape?
No, the actual send out request for qualifications for a con, landscape contractor. Dig into it and actually bring a contractor to the table with us to have all these conversations. Once they have requests for, then he should be able to keep us within budget, what we can and cannot do. I know as a contractor, what a bathroom costs or what a, a landscape bush would cost. You and I don't know that. But it sounds like we're getting just architectural designs and then we have to go out for bid again, um, or RFQs and go that direction as well. It was just a thought. I, I know a lot of great landscape contractors that are capable of doing some really nice stuff.
Hey, Mr. Keen or Chad want to address that?
Yeah. Chad, could you discuss who's on your team for this project?
Uh, certainly. Um, so we are the prime consultant. We are a landscape architecture and planning firm. Um, but we do have a larger firm with architectural consultants, geotechnical engineers, which we need if we're going to build any structures on the site. Um, uh, we also have cost estimation as a part of the design side. Um, but I think the, the point's well taken in terms of, uh, the construction side. Uh, um, that, that's definitely, uh, would be necessary for a team that actually constructs it. Because our team does not, is not design build. We actually are, so we would produce contract documents that it was built from. Um, they would need a contractor to build it. So we have, um, also structural engineering, uh, civil, civil engineering, which again, it's been mentioned several times, uh, the grading on the site, um, i- is really critical. Uh, and, um, a, as well as, uh, uh, electrical engineering, the infrastructure on the site is going to be critical. Um, and the type of events, whether this is, um, low tech or high tech. Uh, the, the design process will sort of, uh, suss that out. But, um, the electrical and lighting design team that we have for red engineering is also on our team. So it's not just one consultant. We have a team of consultants and the possibilities that the project brings, um, potentially, uh, you know, a bridging structure, looking at, uh, potential restroom facilities, all of those elements is what, uh, requires, uh, such a robust team that we have. So that's, um, the, the reason we approached it that way from the beginning. And, um, yeah, I'd be happy to go into further detail. I want to design it here at this moment. But I do think the intent, um, that I hear is, is definitely the, uh, the intent that we approach the scope with.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Councilmember Lynn.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. So what I don't see anywhere in here, well, first I'm looking at the primary scope and I'm seeing architect, engineer, cost, ethne, yada, yada. And that's for a hundred and eighty-four. We don't even start talking about the stage or the, uh, bridge until an additional sixty-four thousand, which now brings it to two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars instead of the one eighty-five. So we're already still not getting the thing that we asked for with the bridge and that one eighty-five. And then one big component that I'm not seeing at all, and it's probably a totally different thing is we're designing all this and we don't even have restrooms up there. And if I remember, I don't know if Mr. Fraley is here or not. I don't know. I believe like restrooms in that area were like over four hundred thousand dollars, three fifty. Like we're not even talking about that. So we're going to go design something like this. We don't even have restrooms up in that area. Like I have like huge concerns with this. I, and I do think it should go back to the community. We haven't really talked to the community since the Vision 2020 thing. I mean, we talked about the, uh, specification or what was it? The ki, the committee, I didn't see any citizens on there. I have like huge concerns. This needs to go back to the citizens. And maybe can Parks and Rec Board have a work session? Can, can Parks and Rec Board, are they allowed to have work sessions?
Sure. I mean, that, that would be of the.
I mean, before going to, I'm not saying no to this, but I really think we need to reel it back. Like the restrooms is a huge thing. It is a huge, huge part of it. So that I just have major concerns.
Yeah. So the discussion, uh, this evening is on the primary scope. So this, uh, if, uh, council awards it, it'd be for one hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. The additional optional services will be based on and come back before us, should that be something that we need to move forward with. Uh, there also is discussion, uh, with, uh, the area that we have over at, um, uh, the parking lot on Mesquite. That restroom facilities will be located there, um, and, and be able to work in concert with some of our other efforts. But, uh, those discussions would, would be forthcoming. Uh, now as far as, um, engaging, uh, with, uh, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and the selection committee, I think we're really confused on the selection committee. We don't have a selection committee, um, of citizens identify the police cars we're going to buy. We don't have a selection committee to identify the pipe fittings that we're going to have in public works. We don't do that for site selection for those types of things. They come before us based on our procurement code and state law. And then we make the decision, decision if that's the right thing to do. The citizens and our community will be highly engaged in this process. And that's been identified in some of the tasks that are outlined in this agreement that, uh, we're talking about today or the scope of work. Um, Councilmember Lynn has been very patient, so I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I don't mind listening to what everybody else has to say. And, uh, sometimes they actually say what I was going to say so that I don't have to. But, um, I just kind of want to get back to the overall scope of this, this project. For one, it's, but this has been ongoing for six years. Six years ago, the Partnership for Economic Development won a, won a two million dollar prize. The Partnership for Economic Development has a million dollars to spend on this project. The city doesn't. The Partnership for Economic Development does. We just own the property. So it's actually their money, not our money. Um, their plans for this was to go into a public-private partnership, as was discussed earlier. And in order to, um, get some private investors to try to build part of this and sell part of this. The city was going to sell part of this property off to private developers. They started the first Friday events downtown to show that there was, um, interest in the downtown area. And it did that, but unfortunately it didn't bring any investors forwards. So now here we are as a city, six years later, saying we need to do something. So now we're ready to move forward and do something. What I hear from the public is we like this as a park, as a gathering event. We don't want all those buildings. We don't, what we'd like to see is maybe a stage. Um, now if we're going to do this, we have to have parking. The city has a parking lot. It's across the, the wash. The restrooms are going to be across the wash. So obviously a bridge is going to be part of this. Whether it comes from the PED's million dollars or whether it comes from other community, um, service clubs. There's going to have to be a bridge just so we can legally have enough parking for any of the events that go here. Uh, the way I read this contract and what I was thinking this was going to be when I came in here tonight was we were going to have a development services contract with this company. And they were going to go forward, talk to the community, uh, find out whether or not, do we want a stage? Do we not want a stage? Do we want a bridge with parking? Do we not want a bridge with parking? Talk to the downtown business owners. What is it that you foresee this project going to be? Talk to the, the council members. Talk to, uh, Parks and Rec. What is it that we want to build on here? Am I wrong that that's what your plans are?
Yeah. And I, I think that's what I was referring to when I talked about the robust, uh, early design process. Um, schematic design is a deliverable. It's a series of drawings that tell you what the concept is. But that whole timeframe that, um, yeah, two to three months worth of time includes the, the different, uh, public outreach meetings to talk about those concepts, to develop the program and the scope, um, that will go into the final drawings and those kinds of things. And so.
You'll be getting that information from the public, which is what, what it is that we want. And then as far as the stakeholders, uh, and I have to agree with the mayor on this. I think there was some confusion because city staff is always the one that negotiates these. When we put out a request for qualifications for a contract of this sort, it's always the city staff that does that. Um, then it's up to whatever contractor that we hire, in, in this case, uh, before us here is DIG Studio. Then it's his responsibility to now go, um, to Parks and Recs and, and Councilmember Lynn. Um, I would expect that he would have a lot of conversations with you and your group, and you would have, uh, quite a bit of input on this. You've been on that board for a long time and, and you're the one that hears about a lot of this stuff. And I would think you would be involved in that process, not necessarily the process of finding a, um, uh, a stud, like DIG Studios, a contractor, but working with them once the city's hired one. Um, that, that's the way I see it. That this is what, we're moving forward the way we're, we're supposed to be moving forward and hiring somebody to go out and talk to the public. Um, Mr. Keen, and I think you guys do great work. And, um, Councilmember, um, Moses brought this up. Does your staff have the time and the expertise to actually go out and do that and meet with the public and talk to the public? And, I mean, you guys are busy already. Can you take time out of your, your day? Um, in order to do the job that, that we're hiring this, this gentleman to do? Um, if I was to, to guess, um, I would say no. Uh, you guys are already busy. Um, so we, we need somebody that's going to be able to do that. We can't do that as a council. Um, that's not what our job is. So we hire a consultant, um, using PED dollars, um, in this, in this instance, to, to do that work and do that public outreach, bring something forward to us. If we like it, great. If we don't, then we send them back to the drawing table. That's what we did with the courthouse. We hired a consultant. We're not happy and went back to them, back to the drawing board. Um, so in, in my opinion, it's time to move forward. It's time to do something with this property. And the way to do that is to hire a consultant to go out to the public and say, public, what do you want us to do with this lot? We're, we're hearing all kinds of different things. You tell us. And then we go to the PED and say, okay, these are the ideas that have come forward. Give us our, give us the money that you have for this project. My thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. Yeah. Councilmember Moses.
Out of every issue that we've ever discussed for, you know, having a consultant come on, we actually are set up to take public comment and have a committee to gather those comments from and represent, you know what I mean? And, and to advise us on what they want to see. And that is the Parks and Rec Board. Like we, we don't have that for the court. We don't have that for, uh, you know, our, the, the salaries for our employees. You're right. Like we don't have those, we don't have those people in place, but we do have it in place for our Parks and Rec. That's the only point I want to make to your respect.
And that's, that's why they'll be part of the process. So we have to be able to move forward so that they can be part of the process and we can hear what their feedback is going to be, uh, so that we can move forward. This isn't just about planning. This is also about construction documents so that we can go and build whatever it is we're going to build in this downtown gathering space.
Mr. Mayor, in all due respect, being on the Parks and Rec Board, the Parks and Rec Board has not been even, they've never even talked about this. They've, they've have not talked about this project at all until last night when Mr. Keen brought it up. And this is no, you know, this is no dismissal to Mr. Keen. Cause he and I have talked about this. But we do have a Parks and Rec Board. They, they've been part of the process when it was Cypress, when it was Sarah Park. They've been a process of everything. And I feel like they were skipped over on this. And I really feel like I need to defend that word. They, I'm not saying they need to pick the architects and stuff, but this specific project has not even been brought up to them. And I, I really don't want to go here, but we just, a few months ago, gave the, uh, the, the tier out at the Environmental Learning Center, two hundred thousand dollars. And we still have not heard nothing on them, what they were going to do with it. That's two hundred thousand dollars of the same money. It came from the same thing. That the community has no idea where that money is, what they've done. There's been a couple of newspaper articles. And I just feel, you know, going back, oh, it's the PED money. It's the city money. Well, we were involved in both of these decisions. And so far with the Environmental Learning Center, we've heard nothing. And like I said, we're not here to talk about that tonight, but I just am really concerned how this is going forward. Whose money it is, what money it is, but the process of it, I don't care for it.
Yeah. So Mr. Keen, you presented this to the Parks and Rec Advisor Board yesterday to get feedback.
No, we made mention that it would be coming to them as part of the process, um, for the design of.
Gotcha. Yeah. So I mean, point taken, Councilmember Lynn, if, if, uh, it, it should have been in front of Parks and. If it should've been in front of Parks and Rec Advisory sooner, yeah, the point is taken, and I appreciate you standing up for those hardworking citizens that volunteer their time for that committee or that commission. But the fact of the matter is, we still have this matter in front of us today, to be able to move forward with the scope of work with Dig Studios.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan.
Don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I'm just trying to get clarification. Agreed with everything you said. I agree with what Councilmember Lane says, except I have a little, I guess I have questions. When, in my, in a little bit, I get to vote yes or no is pretty much all. I'm just hoping we're on the same page. We've all seemed to use the word "park," but my concern is, like I said, are we hiring him to build a park for a million dollars? Or are we, like I said, six months down the road, PED and everybody else, they wanna build a $5 million community sharing something, something or other, that's hip and modern, and that's what we're coming back with? If we're putting this money in a park to develop it to these things, I am on board. Just to clarify, it's not the PED's money, they're just, the PED's safeguarding it for us. I don't want them to think they have a million dollars, but, you know, and it's the community's money, and I just, I, we've literally wasted half a million dollars on the Environmental Learning Center with these big, big plans that are so unrealistic, you know, unless we're gonna write a big check. So I'm for it. I all wanna move the ball forward. But if we're signing off and putting this together to put a million dollar improvements to the park, then I'm a yes. If it's, well, we're gonna see what the city wants, and we're gonna see what people want, and then we're gonna come back, and then we want this, you know, big plan and all this stuff, and a stage and all these, and then it's $3 million, then I think at that point, we've just wasted all this money, 'cause we didn't give him specific directions. So if we're giving him specific directions, yes, build us a park for a million dollars, you have my yes vote.
And the scope of work identifies exactly what you just outlined. So, and that's what's in front of us tonight.
One more question. If we were to give you a more direct plan, that you don't have to spend a bunch of time going to all these meetings and presenting in front of us over and over and over, if they went back to the parks and said, "This is what we want. We just want a stage. We want a bathroom. We want some fences, and we want electric." Does it change the actual scope cost of this project? Does it save you time and money, in return, save us time and money?
Clarity on the scope helps everybody. And when I say robust design process, it's not to say that the scope is unclear, it's to say that the possibilities of this space are many, and I think the way it might serve the city is diverse. And so, I think our charge was to look at all those possibilities within the design phase and bring all those options to the table. And so, if we had had that process already done, then yes, there's savings there. Of course so. And we're involved in a lot of different projects that are structured in different ways. In some projects, we only go up to 15%, so that that can be clearly identified, and then the scope is developed from there. And there's lots of different ways that the, this process is done. So, you know, what you're describing is something we're familiar with as well.
Well, at this point, I think I would like to recommend us moving forward in that direction, gathering up what we want within the community, not waste a bunch of his time and our money or the PED money or whatever you wanna call it, and get all of our ducks in a row of what it's, 'cause we know what it's gonna cost. If we start to build bridges and everything else, we know. I know the grade on that. If you're just regrading that whole thing, that two-acre parcel with retention ponds, we're way over a million dollars, and all we're gonna do is waste everybody's time, and he knows that well, as well as everybody else, that this, this is a big project we're taking. It's a big undertaking, for sure. And I think we need to really understand what we want out of that park. And if we came to them, and I know as a designer, I can spend hundreds of hours with people, but when they come to me and say, "This is exactly what I want," it saves me so much time and energy, and it's brilliant, to tell you the truth. And if you can communicate those things with a group without having to be, 'cause I see some of your time restraints on here, like six weeks, five weeks, three weeks, realistically, to do big work sessions with everybody coming to get everybody's opinion in the community, it's gonna be quite difficult. But the Parks, the Parks Head Department, he knows how to run a park, his staff does. With the input of the Parks and Rec Board, I would really love for them to kinda do a really hard sketch and clean this all up, so you're not stuck here all night again, listening to this, because you've already invested how many hours in this? And it's like, who knows? But thank you for all you've done, and I appreciate you.
Mr. Scruton, did you wanna say?
Yeah, I guess, so in terms of kinda the direction that council wants to go, I'm hearing a couple different things. So if we wanna, if we wanna shorten the timeline, the schedule, well, we can do that, and if we want, if we wanna shorten the, maybe look at the cost of the contract itself, we can lessen that impact, given that we minimize the public input. So the shareholder meetings, you have the deliverables as 33 total meetings, 11 of those being kinda weekly progress reports. But if, the reason why the cost is what it is, and the duration is what it is, is because that there's so many people that wanna, that wanna have their input on the project. So if we wanna do that, then it kinda extends this process a little bit into what we've, what we've providing for council this evening. If we wanna streamline it, we wanna make it go faster, and we want the Parks Board to be the central aspect of the input, we can do that, and that speeds things up. What we presented in terms of staff and the direction that we negotiated with the architect is a long, laborious process that costs money, because we wanna talk to the Parks Recreation Board, the PED, we wanna talk to the downtown businesses, we wanna talk to the public and as a whole. So if we, but we can go in either direction, or somewhere in the middle.
Yeah, thank you. I err on the side of the more public engagement we have through this process, the better. We'll be able to come up with a much broader plan. It's, this is always what we identified, and now this is coming to fruition. So I'm a little surprised by some of the comments that, that we're trying to rush this. This is, we're trying to bring this to some sort of a conclusion, to be able to move forward with this, this great, amazing addition to our downtown. So, we'll take a few more comments or questions, and we'll open up the public hearing and see what our citizens have to say. So, Councilmember Campbell?
My statement is, is I'm not trying to rush anything. I'm just saying, let's take it back, clean it all up, so we have a nice, clean-cut idea, and I expect everybody on this board and everybody within staff, including the Parks and Rec Department Advisory Council, to do their due diligence, and then get us a nice, clean package of exactly what we want to give this gentleman, and say, "This is exactly what we want. We want one stage. We want this, 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 this." We don't have the money to invest in 16 different visuals for the community, and then it's not, I'm not saying rush this through by shortening his schedules. This is not what I'm saying. This is, I'm just trying to say, let us do more homework on our part, 'cause we just changed our mind a little bit ago from going from the Downtown Catalyst program, where we're gonna co with somebody, another developer and all that. And I know how much the Partners of Economic Development has already spent on just Yard City with the, you know, the porta-potties and so on and so forth. There's $100,000 right there. So I definitely would like to see them move out of that location. How do we just give them what they have there a little bit better, and then allow the whole community to be able to use it? And I really think that he needs a lot cleaner direction, and we all save a bunch of money and be really realistic here, because I agree, it's gonna turn into a two-story Taj Mahal courthouse, is what I'm afraid of.
Well, the program of work in front of us isn't going to allow for that to happen. It's very clear on what the scope of work is, if we read through the document, and so that's not going to be part of that consideration. So when it comes to what we're doing, I feel it's very short-sighted for us to limit having experts at the table to lead that conversation. We're talking about throwing a stage here and a garbage can there. What do we know about any of this stuff? This is what the visioning allows this to do with the experts that do that, engaging the users of our community that are going to use it. So why do a downtown catalyst project in a way that we're gonna all get together on a Saturday morning and rake the yard? That's not what we're doing. We're, it's a catalyst project to move our downtown forward and create a gathering spot. So, any final comments before we open the public hearing?
I agree with you. I think we do have to be careful turning this into an à la carte. I wanna choose this section and choose that section. Like I said, my biggest concern is that we have the big direction, that you know what we wanna do. We wanna build, we wanna build a park for this amount of money that we have. And as that's, if that simply fits into this architecture, I know this is, you know, design's expensive, but everything's expensive, and you get what you pay for. So we do need those, the experts that know what they're doing, and that have designed it many, many times. If I was building another station, I'd hire a designer that's built a lot of them. I have a lot of respect for our advisory boards, but they're also a lot like us. They're not experts. They just, they listen, they facilitate the meetings, they would get the public input. But I do think we need the experts that know what questions to ask. Like I said, I just, just bringing it back in, I just wanna make sure we're all on, like I said, the same page, that where we wanna go with it, and it is in that scope for the park, for the million dollars, and it sounds like that's where we are. You know, we've, we've let you know we're very concerned, and we're very, you know, fiscally conservative with our dollars, and wanna make sure we get, you know, all the bang for the buck on this. So, like I said, I'm on board with it. I just, I think we need to, we need to keep it going, but I think we've given enough direction, it sounds like, at least in my opinion, that as long as it doesn't veer off course, and we're talking about a $5 million this, this, and that, and then that's when I'm gonna be like, "Well, you got a million dollars, so, you know, let's work with the million dollars, because everything else is a wishful thinking." So, thanks.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yes. If you'd just, please state your name for the record. Good evening, you're welcome.
Hi, thank you. Brittany Myers.
Brittany, could you just bring the microphone down just a little bit? Thank you.
How about that? Is that better?
Perfect.
I'm concerned about the whiplash you have against the other people here, who are expressing very valid concerns. I definitely agree with Mrs. or Ms. Campbell, as well as Mr. Nolan. This seems very fiscally irresponsible. I wonder where his company is based in, is this money going back into the community? I work with, I've worked with hundreds of people all around the globe, and anytime you go to a meeting and you say, "Hey, what do you guys want?" Without bringing ideas people can react to, you're, we're gonna continue to go nowhere. So I would just love to see more receptivity from our mayor for really well-founded concerns, and I don't think anybody's trying to rush anything, from what I'm hearing, but to pass over important constituents and this important decision, and to pick a contractor before you even have a vision, is very backwards. I don't know if we, anybody here would manage construction on their home in that way, let alone public space we all kinda own.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Yes. Did you wanna talk about, Chad, about where your company is based out of, to answer her question?
So, our company, our office is in Denver and in Phoenix, and I work out of the Phoenix office, and have worked in Arizona for 25 years.
Yeah, great, thank you. And I'm not trying to dismiss any comments, I'm just trying to carry the conversation forward, given the history. I've been involved in this since day one. I was on the team that went to North Carolina and went with the team, the winning team, to bring this forward, and that was the vision of the community at the time, and that's what I'm conveying at this, at this level. And Chad's team will facilitate conversations with, with visioning, so that we do get the best product in the downtown area.
So you let this six-year delay?
Yeah, thank you for, yeah, yeah, thank you, yes.
Hello, David Diaz. Wow, so, that's just my voice, sorry. So, a lot of good information, a lot of good topics that you guys were bringing up, and I think we're selling ourselves short. I think, I agree, and I don't know you that well, Michelle, but I agree with every word you said tonight. I believe that you've got $2 million, $1 million you guys, the land is purchased, right? So now we have $1 million left, and we're gonna spend 18% of it to get, I mean, I'll do it for $50,000. You wanna hire me, I'll get the, I'll get the, I'll get some residents together, some stakeholders downtown, and we'll talk about the different visions people have. I mean, I think, I think we're, we are putting the cart before the horse here. I mean, I don't know the gentleman here, I'm sure he's a respectable young man, but $187,000, and then after that, then we're gonna talk to those stakeholders and find out what we're gonna do. It's not rocket science. I've seen these kinda projects in many different cities before, where they have plots of land, like Mr. Dolan was saying, and then you find out from the stakeholders what you wanna do with it, what do you guys feel? You guys are the business owners down here, you're the restaurant owners, you're the people that do the events. And then, you get someone like that, and you come up, okay, here's, we got all the people together, here's what they wanna do with it. Develop it or show it to us, draw it up. It seems like we're doing that first, and then we're gonna talk to the stakeholder. I don't, I don't get that. Doesn't make any sense. And the $2 million, is it, is it the PED's money? I love you, Dave, believe me, you and I get along great, but the $2 million is the city's money. They work for the city. The PED works for the city. So that's, unless I read it wrong in the paper, that $2 million is the city's money. So, let's spend it wisely, and Cal, I know you're fiscally responsible, but I just think there's some good points here, and it's very, it's good to see government working that way, but some very, very good points. Michelle, I could give you a thumbs up on that. You just made some good points tonight, and I agree with you. Let's, let's be smart, and let's talk to the stakeholder. I mean, there's stake, you could walk up and down McCulloch and get all the stakeholders together, say, "We're gonna have a meeting," and have three or four meetings and talk to them and get their input. You have a lot of retirees in this community that will also like to put input in and tell you how they want that park. And I've seen, I've seen some, and I've been to some great events down there at the park. So, those are my points.
Thank you. Yeah, and the scope of work is part of that process. So they will engage with the citizens. They're not designing it first. They're gonna engage with the citizens and stakeholder groups, and then design based off of that. Yeah.
Very good, David. I was thinking, we have a contest. No. The people who, we have a lot of intelligent people who live here, we have the people, the merchants around in the immediate area. Let's form a, have a contest, $500 goes to the winner. Not that we have to use their plan, but I think the plans we would get, we would probably get a lot of good information.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the public hearing?
I don't know, I'm a lot of good twice. My better half had a really good suggestion. ASU's here. Go through the students, the university, the academics.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and they are one of our stakeholders as well, that's been identified.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a point that we sometimes forget, and I'm a business owner, I would never operate this, ever. I wouldn't hire a consultant to do this. I'd hire an architect, and this is what I wanna do, like Councilmember Campbell said, and, you know, you have a plan, and, you know, you never, you never hire a professional service person unless you know what you want them to do, and you have them do it. Government's totally different, and I, and I get that. We have, we have to be as transparent as possible. We have to involve the community. We have a very heated discussion up here, and this is awesome. I think this is what we should be doing. We don't, we don't get to do this anywhere else. We don't get to be across the street at City Hall and have this conversation, and then come over here. We only get to do it here, because we told the community we were gonna have this conversation within the last two or three days. So this is how we do it, and this is why, you know, I love that we had this conversation. We, you know, also too, for the next time we come and vote, I was told we're doing it for this, this, and that, and if that's not the way it is, that's how it affects my vote next time. But I think some people forget that's, this is, this is government, and we actually do really well at what we do. You know, we spent $2.7 million on a water tank, and we didn't think twice about it, and we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on a company to come in and check the water tower that we know nothing about, and, you know, we're like, "Oh, that's fine, that seems about right." Oh, a million dollars for a courthouse? No, no, you know, we get, 'cause it's stuff we know, we know stuff about, and so we just try to voice our opinion that way. But, you know, and my point being is, if this is what the community wants, and they want this park, and they want the updates, we're gonna have to have the architectural plans, we're gonna have to do all that stuff anyway, and that's, is part of the scope. That's why I feel comfortable with it. Like I said, it's government in action, so it's, just wanna give that perspective out there.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Any final comments on this public hearing?
One last, final quick one.
Yes. Just state your name for the record, please, sir.
Landon Phillips. Should we not re-ask the community what they want if we originally asked them six years ago? I think the demographics have changed here a lot. I think that a park this far away from the water does nobody really any good, honestly. People come here for the lake and for the off-road community and for people to spend time in the downtown area just doesn't really happen that often. Just from my point of view and my perspective.
Yeah. No, thank you for those comments. And that will be part of that outreach is reaching back out to the citizens about what they want and the uses of, of this area. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or a possible motion on the action in front of us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Councilmember Dolan?
I'll do one closing comment and then make a motion. I think that's where we are. We are six, in six years, we have had, you know, we have, it, it is a park that, you know, three months out of the year, you don't use it because it's super hot. But the other nine months out of the year, it does get a lot of use and it is a great town park. And I think, I think hopefully, once this goes through, the community will sign off on the plan and the ideas that we've, we've had over the last six years and what it's become. And this would continue on, on track. I, I don't necessarily think that we're sitting down and starting all over and asking for opinions and what do we want to do? I mean, we, we, it is kind of evolved to what it is and I think we're just going to expand on that and, and develop it for that money. So I'm, I'm optimistic that that's the way the community outreach part of it goes. So I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to award the agreement for professional services for the design of the Downtown Catalyst Project to Dig Studio Incorporated in the amount of $185,423.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lane.
Mayor, if I can just make one more comment.
Yeah, please.
I, I, I want this project bad. Like I, I really want to see this come to fruition. My, my biggest concern is if we spend close to a quarter of our budget on the planning of it, that it will never get done. And that's the only reason that I'm going to be voting no right now.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? All right. We do have a motion and a second. We are ready to vote.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Keen, for the presentation. And thank you, Chad, for being here this evening.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is item nine, current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Uh, I'd just like to echo what City Manager Jessica Knutson said earlier. We have a big month coming up for our 50th anniversary. I invite everybody to go to golakeavasu.com to look at our event schedule. We got a lot of fun stuff happening every single weekend, celebrating our community. So please check it out.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Golakeavasu, as well as Mayor, and a lot of people have put a lot of work into this. And I'm just very thankful for everyone's hard work on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Board member discussion would be the Partners of Economic Development did expand their board to four new members. Very diversified board members. So we're really excited. They do have a lot on their plate. They are doing a lot of positive things out there and I look forward to seeing how it all comes to fruition. Also, if you have a family member or a friend or somebody in need, WakeHog definitely has additional funding available for rental assistance, mortgage assistance. The money's there. People are not applying for it. We recently had a gentleman just reach out in regards to becoming homeless due to the short-term rental issues and having no place to go after 30 years. And Teresa Diaz over at WakeHog did a wonderful job of redirecting him and giving him some hope. So that was very positive.
Yeah, great. Thank you for those updates. Are there any other council committee reports? All right. Item 10 is future meetings. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. It'll be a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, October 26th, 2021 at 6:00 PM, we will also have a regular meeting. Item 11?
Mr. Mayor, were you going to do future discussion items?
That's the next item on the agenda. Yeah. So item 11, are there any future discussion items?
I would.
Right. Councilmember Lynn?
So since we've been talking a lot about this 2020 vision and where the money's gone, is there any way we can have a discussion and maybe an update on the Environmental Learning Center and where that money went? Because I've been asking and I'm kind of curious of what direction that's looking at.
Sure. Is there a second to that item?
I'll second it for her.
All right, great. So we have a, a future discussion item on a report. Mr. Knutson, do you have enough information on what Councilmember Lynn is looking for?
Yeah, I believe so. I think we can get maybe members of pillar four to come to a council meeting and we'll make that request. Does that sound fair? Okay. We'll, we'll make an invitation for that to occur.
Thank you. Any additional future discussion items?
Mayor, I have one.
Yes.
I'm going to throw it in here. I'm glad she's still here. I motion to discuss stopping the sewer and water rate study and retroing it back to the July 1st with applied credits as soon as next meeting until we can have proper data and conversations, which are in the best interest of all of our public.
So on October 26th, we'll be having that discussion on our agenda to address.
I agree, but I would like to motion discuss as early as this next city council meeting to stopping, stopping these water and sewer rate studies. Because as you heard tonight, some people are getting hit. They might bankrupt their HOAs. And this is such a big deal that I don't think it would hurt us at all to discuss it even further about just stopping it all until we have further discussions and data in front of us. So again, I am motion, motioning to as early as next city council meeting to discuss stopping the sewer and rates study and retroing it back to July 1st until we can have further discussions and we don't feel rushed. And we don't need to leave our citizens in this desperate need and concern of bankrupting their HOAs. That's my motion.
Thank you. All right.
Can I ask the city attorney a question? Is that something?
You have to wait. We can't have any discussion on the item until it either passes or fails. So if there's a second, all the second will do, we can't take any action. So all the second will do is say that yes, somebody else agrees that this needs to be discussed. So.
I'll second.
Okay. Now you can ask questions.
Okay. I, I do agree we need to discuss it and I know we have it on the next meeting. Maybe we could see if the, not, not the next meeting, but the other meeting. Is that something, is that even a possibility to suspend? I know, like I said, we've had these bills tripled and, and it's, is there a way of pausing it until we can get to that point? Because I know, is that even an option that we can do that at the next council meeting or?
Well, we can discuss it at the next council meeting. We can't have any discussions about it right now. And so, I mean, it's definitely, we can discuss it. We'll see what the options are and what that means and how that affects us.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, if it's determined that that's, you know, the second doesn't necessarily mean that it puts it on the next council meeting. Although we understand that's what your intent is, it'll be analyzed in accordance with the, with the city code.
Mr. Knutson?
Just, so where I understand, the reason we read that it was scheduled for the October 26th is because that was the first available date for the consultant to, to attend and provide all the background information. So if we want to do it at the next council, council meeting, we can, but we won't have the consultant here to share the, to share the data.
I'm motioning to discuss stopping and retroing it back until we have further discussions. That's what I'm saying. It's just too long of a wait for these people. We've already got July, August, September, now October. And as some of these, we heard tonight, were $7,000. I mean, how do you, and they're not even budgeted in their session. Like I, we have our annual meetings April 1st. We don't even have this in our budget. We will have to go get financing to pay for the next four months. And just one of the HOAs that I'm dealing with. So it's not just a little mistake. It's a 100% to 200% increase that needs to be, okay. No, no more discussion. All right. So I motioned to discuss that. I already got a second. So let's do it.
Uh, Mr. Knutson and Ms. Gary, do you have enough information to be able to move forward? I mean, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda and we'll be able to have a little discussion because there's not a consultant here to give us the calculations. But, but we will have the conversation on the 26th regardless to be able to address these. So. But all right. Any other future discussion items? All right. 12, motion to adjourn? All right. We have a motion and a second. I thank you all for being here and being part of the conversation. We are adjourned. Be kind. We'll see you next time.